Come on, Paul didn't debrief you.
I have already called the meeting to order for the Ojai City Council's regular meeting, 28th June 2016.
Excuse me, I'll repeat, I didn't have my microphone on. Called the meeting to order for Ojai City Council, regular meeting 7:00 PM, June 28th, 2016. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Wyrek.
Here.
Councilwoman Haney.
Here.
Councilwoman Laura.
Here.
The record will reflect that Councilwoman Flack is absent among Mayor Blatt's staff present.
As we say, Mr. Councilperson Laura, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Our first extremely important and significant presentation is we are going to administer an oath of office for the city clerk, and I just want to make a comment about Cynthia Burrell, who was unanimously appointed for the remainder of the existing unexpired term for city clerk. She's impressed everyone that has met her and interviewed her, and she comes with a wealth of experience to a critical function of answering to the people and the people alone of the city of Ojai for getting information about their government. And so with that, I'm going to ask the city manager to administer the oath of office.
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, do you have your cheat sheet?
Do I have to read it?
Or you can repeat after me. Please raise your right hand. Your name, do solemnly affirm.
I, Cynthia Burrell, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. I'll give you the privilege of a comment to the community if you'd like.
Well, I'm happy to be back, but I would like to take this opportunity to swear Cheryl in as a deputy city clerk to operate on my behalf whenever I'm not available.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I'm impressed you can get through there, I never could. But you, yeah, we'll do it the way she, he did it, yeah.
Raise your right hand. I, Cheryl Shaw, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
It actually sounds like we ought to have Dave Kenny there because we're doing this foreign and domestic stuff.
Well, I know. I appreciate it. But I like the fact that we just doubled the number of people that answer to the people as a whole, answer to the citizens as a whole in terms of getting information about their government to them. So that's wonderful.
I appreciate the appointment, thank you.
Thank you for willing to come back. With that, we'll start public communications, as time set aside during the meeting for members of the public to address the city council or the successor agency board on terms of city business. Other than scheduled agenda items, everything except scheduled agenda items, they may be, matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the council but will generally be referred to staff that are placed on a subsequent agenda if so desired by the council. Under state law, other than emergency items, no actions can be taken. Requested persons that wish to address to fill out a speaker card, and we will nominally limit comments to three minutes timed by our deputy city clerk. First one that I have for public communications is Deborah Pendry.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Wyrek, council members. Deborah Pendry representing the Ojai Valley Green Coalition. I just wanted to keep a couple things fresh in our mind. As I mentioned at the last city council meeting, we will be doing our fourth Solarise program with the Community Environmental Council this summer, August through October, and we'll also be expanding into the Santa Clara River Valley to bring that valley into the Solarise program and get more renewables into our, into our region. And at the October 13th, 2015 council meeting, you adopted an ordinance amending your municipal code, and even though you were doing it, you formally put into ordinance expediting permitting procedures for small residential rooftop solar systems. And along with that, on November 11th, 2014, the council reduced fees by 50% if the solar company doing an installation was eligible for the Home Energy and Renovation Opportunity Program, better known as HERO, property assessment, clean energy, better known as PACE, or the Empower Advantage Program. So whereas the city of Ojai usually runs around $500 for permitting on solar, if the qualifying installation company is associated and certified with any of these programs, then that's reduced by 50% or basically $250. So that's great. And along with that, at that same meeting, October 13th, 2015, you appropriated $5,000 for part of the feasibility study for, on community choice energy. So that feasibility study is due sometime this fall, and that was part of the county reaching out to each city in Ventura to put some money into it. Santa Barbara County and City is kind of leading the charge with the Community Environmental Council, and they actually on June 15th of this year, just a couple weeks ago, approved further funding before the feasibility study even comes out for the next leg of this process. So they want to be ready to go once the feasibility study comes out, and they feel very strongly that it's going to be very positive. So, and as a reminder of that, the community choice energy is about, how it works is local governments create a new public agency that's responsible for the purchasing and producing electricity, but our utility was still be responsible for delivering and maintaining the lines, but it gives communities the opportunity to gain more control of our power supply. So we get cleaner energy, we get more choice, we get competitive rates, but we also create local control and accountability and bringing more funds into our communities through that. And it just expands the opportunity for new renewable energy a hundredfold, literally. So we're very excited that this continues on in conversation, and we'll keep the city of Ojai updated on that and hopefully part of the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Dennis Leary.
Good evening, and thank you. I want to talk about something that concerns me, and that's the safety of Ojai, not because of what you're doing, but because of the global and national situation which would impact us as everybody. The two big things that I see are the possibility of war with Russia, a country that can destroy us in a half an hour and there's nothing we can do about it. I mean, it's crazy. The other thing is the financial bubble that is bound to burst, and I'm thinking that if any one of these two things happen, it's going to really require us as a community to look at things in a different way. Now, I hope that it won't happen, but the old saying is, "Hope for the best and prepare for the worst." Now, there's a number of things that, you know, I would think that we could at least consider, to prepare ourselves psychologically for possibilities. And the one that I've mentioned here before a number of times is the, is the water situation, which now is aggravated by the drought. We have a big lake underneath us, but we, the city of Ojai, as far as I know, unless I'm missing something, does not have control of our own water. Now, I hope that Casitas will be taking over for Golden State, but even then, what if Casitas goes dry or nearly dry? Then, Casitas would provide us, provide us with water, but we have one representative on the board. Mr. Baggarly told me that absolutely we will not ship any water out of here to Ventura. Okay, that's probably on the books, but in an emergency, I think a court could tell us, "Hey, we've got to share our water with people that don't have any around us," and I don't know how we could get around it. So what's going to happen is, if that happens, is that we still got the water under there, but we don't have any control. It's going to be Casitas and the water companies and the private wells. If people don't have enough water, those prices are going to go up. Those people are probably going to be allowed to sell their water. Now, the more wealthy people, it may not be much of the problem. They can go other places, they can have water shipped in, and they can pay the, pay the more prices. But what about the people, the workers and so on? Now, we hope this doesn't happen, but I'm just saying that I think that as a community, we ought to be at least aware of the possibilities and watch the global and national news. Watch the money, watch the, watch the push for war, especially as we come up to this election. I think it's very important. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it. Next speaker card I have is Beverly Park Sherbo on public comment. Again, item's not on the agenda.
Good evening. I hope this is okay. My daughter, Kelsey Zimmerman, who has spoken here before, was unable to be here today, and I, and I said that I would read this letter to you. My name is Kelsey Zimmerman, and I'm a homeowner, mom and small business owner. My husband and I have two children at Topa Topa Elementary. My husband was born here, as well as his four siblings, and I was raised here since the age of 12, having moved from Ventura. We both attended public school here from Topa Topa to Matilla Ha to Nordoff to Ventura College. Many of my family members, including my parents and my husband's parents, live in Ojai. My husband's siblings are now raising their children alongside us here, as is my husband's cousin and my cousin. It truly takes a village to raise these kids, but that's why we chose to move back to Ojai to be a family and part of this community. Every one of us moved back for this. That's how special Ojai is to us, to having been raised here and having left and experienced other places, nothing could compare. We are also the unhappy next door neighbor, if you could call it, of the house hotel for the past three and a quarter years. The effect this has on my family and our quality of life is extreme and plays a daily toll on us, but tonight I want to focus on the broader implications of short-term rentals that they have on our school district. We finally had the opportunity to move back when our son was just entering public school six years ago. We were lucky, we found a place to buy, now that would be impossible. Ultimately, the very fabric of our town and funding of our public services is at stake with this issue. There is a clear connection between availability of housing and the health of our schools. The conversion of once, we're, once, the conversion of once long-term rentals into STRs and the race to purchase homes for STRs affects young families' abilities to move or to stay in the area, negatively impacts enrollment attendance, thereby affecting funding and teacher salaries. We have the lowest paid teachers in all of Ventura County. Not having more families or long-term families leads to less volunteers for extracurricular activities like reading, math, science, music, art. Remember, it takes a village. Ask any teacher or administrator at our public school how much they rely on parents and grandparents and volunteers to help. Teacher and the Valleywide School District staff's ability to secure housing thereby affects the pool of teacher and staff availability, et cetera. When the principal of school can't afford to or can't find housing to live here and commutes into town, we have a problem we need to address yesterday. I ask that the council diligently pursue enforcement for those that continue to operate in violation of the zoning ordinance and help return our housing stock to our residents and bring life back to our school district and town. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make a brief comment that we will be taking up the short-term vacation rental enforcement issue for, as a discussion item, right after the consent calendar. And I have two more public comments, and I would ask if these two are associated with short-term rentals that you, that's Mary Marcy Tasher and Tom Francis, if it's, if it's discussing the short-term rentals, you wait till Agenda Item 3, which we write after the consent calendar?
Well, it is mine, it's discussing short-term rentals, but not enforcement.
Okay, well, I'm going to be permissive for any discussion of any aspect of short-term rentals when we get to that item. Personally, as chair, I prefer that we cluster all that discussion, if that's okay. You certainly have a right to come up forward if you, if it's not associated with short-term rental, but we are going to be discussing, believe me, that issue. And I'll just continue my comment that after the consent calendar, we're going to move the item number two, public hearing on the city of Ojai budget. That agenda item is going to be moved to the end of the agenda after item number seven because we have to go into closed session to discuss something with respect to labor negotiations before we pass the budget, and we certainly do not want to have everyone waiting around here on us. So are there any other public comments? All right, move forward. Reports from council members. Councilman Laura.
Yes, I'm going to put on my Ojai Valley Community Hospital Foundation Boardroom member hat, and just, I'm excited to report that the acute center here in Ojai hopefully will start as soon as the city reviews the grading permits, and where they're thinking they're going to start sometime in August, end of August, and it's pretty exciting. And just a personal note on that, it has to do with health. I'm fortunate and unfortunate for being part of a huge family, and I say this because I'm fortunate because, to give you an idea, I have probably over 71st cousins, and one side of my family, my grandma has probably easily great, about 50 great-great-grandchildren, and she has great-great-great-great-grandchildren already too. So it's, it's beautiful to bring in somebody into this world, but at the same time, it's, it's sad because I unfortunately say bye to a lot of my relatives, and today I happened to say bye to a relative that was very influential to my father, and last week I lost an uncle. So I just, it's a quick reminder about how short life is and how we should enjoy our loved ones because they're not here, and I feel blessed because even though we're a huge family and a huge extended family, we're, we're, we keep in touch quite a bit. So just remember your loved ones tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Haney.
Councilman Savaro and I have taken note of the council direction regarding cultural resources, and I just wanted to publicly state, we're going to be meeting July 11th at 6 o'clock. We're going to have a different format in our agenda, and we're going to have a different way of how we communicate with the public. There'll be a larger section of Q and A. Just the format's going to change based on the input that we've received from council.
Thank you. Did you have a comment, city manager?
Just wanted to add that it will be, the meeting will be held in the council chambers here at City Hall.
Right.
I have a short announcement, finally. I'm very excited, we're going to have the first meeting, organizational meeting really, for the study group on medical marijuana in Ojai and how to proceed with the local discretion that the state of California has given the local jurisdictions. And so we are, that meeting will be Thursday at 3:30, will be our first meeting to discuss that. So I'm looking forward to myself learning a lot and coming up with the best way that we can address that aspect of the medical needs, an area of quickly changing aspects in our culture and in the law right now.
Mayor Protem, you might note where that meeting will be.
I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me. It's going to be in the city council chambers at 3:30 this Thursday, and I appreciate your correcting my oversight. Thank you. All right, let's move on with the consent calendar. Councilman Laura, Councilman Haney, is there items that you, anybody wishes to pull from the consent calendar?
No. I'd like to pull D.
And I am going to pull C. So...
I move to approve A, B, E, F, G.
A, B, E?
Oh, E, F, G, yes.
Nice second.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Haney?
Here. Yes. I know, I was sitting here scratching my head going...
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrek.
Yes. All right, let's take them up in order. Item C, authorization to amend agreement with DAPR, Rosenblatt, and Litback LLP for special counsel services. Mr. McClary, did you have any quick comments on this? I think the item is pretty straightforward in the packet.
Yeah, simply about this forward because I was quite clear that I did not have authority under the contract to go beyond the 15,000. I could have approved the difference under my city manager's budget authority, but I felt the direction was quite clear to staff to not go beyond the 15,000, so therefore I've brought it back to the city council. We do recommend a payment of the additional amounts as the work was necessary and valid. However, I did not, again, feel that I had the authority to approve anything beyond the 15,000 that was stipulated in the original contract, or stipulated in the contract at that amount.
Since I pulled this item, I'm going to make a comment and then invite other comments free, unless you wish, either of you wish to proceed. Council passed a very clear limit without par approval on these dollar amounts. This was an attorney that signed this contract. This is the second time this has happened in the last few months where council approved a contract, where, no, I take that back, where payments were made without contract authorization first, and then now a second time, work was billed to us without par approval per contract stipulation. I'm not comfortable with this. I'm not comfortable with an attorney who represented the building appeals board before a hearing, signing a contract, and then the attorney says, "Whoops, I forgot to follow the terms of the contract." I'm not comfortable with that. I understand that the argument is that the services were necessary, yet the contractual terms were also very clear. So if this council, I'm just uncomfortable with it becoming a habit, perhaps, now of the council attempting to exercise fiscal control and the parties to the contract simply not respecting that. So that's my opinion, and I'm not comfortable approving it, but I'm, you know, open to discussion.
I just got a question for our city attorney. Is this a regular practice as a lawyer or a city, between the city?
When we, our contracts tend to be of two forms. One form is the monthly retainer amount, as we have with the city of Ojai, which provides for a flat retainer for X amount of services and above that by the hour without a full not-to-exceed amount, reflecting the ongoing nature of our practice with this city and our other general council cities. Our other contracts, however, for a specific, a particular service, for example, a one-off, one-off advice on an item, have a not-to-exceed amount, and one of our practices is to watch that not-to-exceed amount, and our accounting staff tries to watch that to make sure that we don't go above our contract amounts without pre-approval from the city.
So you're saying no?
In other words, I'm not sure I can speak for all the attorneys in the world, but I know that my firm does try very hard to make sure we don't exceed not-to-exceed amounts without approval from the client because while many cities will pay the amount if they find the services were warranted, if you go above your not-to-exceed amount, you don't have a legal entitlement to that amount, although, and so we would rather be in a position of having an entitlement to get our bills paid as opposed to a, "Mother, may I?"
Okay. Councilman Haney, do you have a comment?
So I have a question in, in any other contract negotiations, when you go outside of that contract, would that require a change order?
If it's in the public works context where change orders are the form, then yeah, you do a change order.
Well, is there any change orders in your business? If you agree to a contract and then you're asked to do something, you write a contract for the city of Ojai, and part of that is a limited amount of money to perform this, at what point, who's responsible to come back and say, "I've reached the limits of our negotiated contract, and I need to go pass them." So would that be a change order, or would that be just someone, you know, the attorney coming back to the city saying to further represent you in this cause, "I need additional funding." Who's responsible for that? I'm sure that's the biggest question.
I would view that it's the lawyer's responsibility to recognize where you are in your contract amounts, where you are in the bill amounts, and then come to the city to say we need an amendment. A change order would be the public works term contracting term. Here, we call an amendment, same thing. Modification of the contract. We always try to watch that. Some cities have a programmed place of requiring tracking of that amount if there is a not-to-exceed amount on a contract. Every time a bill is paid, you have to, I'm thinking here of the city of LA, every time you pay their bills, or you bill them, rather, you have to list both your, how much that month is and where you are on your not-to-exceed, if your contract has a not-to-exceed. I'm not sure if, I don't think that's necessarily been Ojai's practice.
So that might be something that we instill. Here's the other thing I know from construction contracting, technically if you don't have a signed change order, the client doesn't have to pay you.
And that is certainly true in the public works context.
Pretty simple. So if we really wanted to be hard-nosed about this, we'd just say, "We're sorry." And if we wanted to be amenable to this attorney, because he did represent us and did do a fairly good job, then we might want to rethink how we want to do that. I don't know if we want to go back to him and find the halfway point and make some type of an agreement, or if we want to pay him in full, or if we don't want to pay him.
Well, my, when I read the staff report, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, really is, about explaining what the, what the extra 7,000 and change was. I thought about it too, but at the same time, it was our first appeal. It did take a lot of time, and I, and the fact that we didn't know exactly how it was going to pan out, it's hard to really know, and I'm not saying that that's an excuse, but at the same time, it is a valid reason that this could have happened because it was, it's our first appeal. I viewed the video, it was a very long meeting, it actually was two meetings, and I, I thought he did a fairly, an okay job for the first time. I think that there's some things that we could learn in the future if we ever, if this ever happens again. I'm open to come halfway and come to a negotiation, but also because it's our first time, I feel we have to be semi-flexible, and then next time it comes up, I think we should have the criteria, and we should explain clearly that we don't want any extra fees to come on afterwards, because I don't want to be known as the city that is going to hold you up to that contract and will not negotiate if this ever happens again. But I think that if we learn from this and we create criteria for in the future for them to be, know to track their time, and then come back, and we'll be able to, I mean, I don't know, this is the first time it's happened. I know we're kind of getting off topic here in terms of whether we're going to pay this attorney or not and bring that criteria aspect to it, but I do see Mayor Protem's, Wyrek's point here that we did enter to a contract agreement, but at the same time, it's our first time, and we just didn't know how this ballgame was going to, and be played.
Well, I'll just comment in response to that, the criteria was very specific, 15,000 maximum unless specifically approved in advance and in writing by the city. And this is more than a 50% exceedance. I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with that. So I, I mean, I've made my feelings known. I'll entertain a motion, but...
Yeah, I'm willing to... Yeah, I'm willing to go back and negotiate. At the same time, I do know, you're absolutely right, Mayor Protam Wyrick, that it was clear. It's just difficult seeing that meeting and knowing that, I just didn't know what to expect, and being put in that position, I think we should, we should be, we should show flexibility to a certain degree, and I, and I think he did a fairly okay job in helping try to facilitate the meeting. So I, being for the first time, I know there's a lot of improvements areas that we, next time that we do this, we're definitely going to identify, but as the first time, I think there should be some, some flexibility in terms of being able to work with him.
I understand. Do we, more discussion or...
Just a simple one. As a contractor who has provided services without a change order and has had to eat that money, or have had to go back to the client and ask to negotiate a settlement, I'd be more inclined to negotiate something with this gentleman versus paying him in full.
Okay, so I...
In that case, I'll make a motion to authorize the city attorney to prepare and the city manager to execute a negotiation amendment to the professional services agreement with Depper, the law firm, to permit payments for the services in excess of the original agreement cap.
Can I add one thing to it? Not to exceed 50% of the amount owed.
And not to exceed 50% agreed in the amendment.
Is that an acceptably worded motion, Mr. Summers?
As I understand the motion, it is to authorize the city attorney to prepare and the city manager execute an amendment to the contract with Depper, Rosenblatt, and Litvak for payment of services above the original cap not to exceed 50% of $7,803.62.
So my understanding of the motion is no action tonight, subject to seeing this agendized of another proposal in the future.
That is not my understanding of the motion. My understanding of Councilmember Laura's motion is to authorize...
The final decision to be...
Final decision up to that amount.
And I would amend my motion and add at the end, subject to council's approval.
Okay. That would then accomplish the Mayor Protam stated goal.
It would come back to the council before ratification.
Right. As amended by the maker and presumably by the second, I understand the motion to be, to authorize the city manager to negotiate and I to draft a form for council to approve an amendment to the contract with Depper, Rosenblatt, and Litvak up to 50% of the $7,800 requested amount, subject to further approval by council.
If this motion passes, there'll be no payment until it comes back to council.
Correct. And what will come back to council will be somewhere between zero and half of $7,800.
Okay. Any more discussion? Call the roll?
Wait a second.
Oh, I thought, Mr. Haney seconded it, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Yes.
We now move on to item D. Councilman Haney.
Is Mr. Grant here?
He was.
Good evening, Councils. Greg, I just had a couple of simple questions. The, you've asked to write a contract to two engineering companies. Does one provide a service that the other one can't do?
I think the two firms proposed are, one is a smaller firm that has a lot more local knowledge.
That's Crabtree Group.
And the other one, Stantec, is a much bigger firm that's buying out smaller firms. They bought out Penfield and Smith out of Santa Barbara, and they have a great deal of experience in complete streets areas, and Crabtree does also, but these complete street projects can be controversial. So ideally, you have a peer review where they just take a look at the project together.
Okay.
But a lot of these local projects, yeah, I think we lean towards the local firm, and a lot of the other projects where they might have better expertise, we lean towards the bigger firm.
Okay.
It's great to have the option, a little bit like, I guess, the community development department was having trouble hiring. It seems like there's a little bit of a boon in public works and other expenditures, and a lot of these firms are stretched thin right now. I think that's directly related to that, just a shortage of personnel available. So if one firm's a little bit tight, can't turn it around fast enough, it's great to have that other firm to lean on as well.
So then, do you guys have any questions about that?
I have, no, I don't on that. I have another question, but go ahead.
Then the second question is, you want additional funding of up to, was it $80,000 or $100,000 a year?
It was a maximum of $100,000, about 10%, what the road overlay budget would be.
And I guess my question is, if we had engineering on our city's streets last year, do our city streets change, or can't we take the same engineering that we've already received and apply that to next year's overlays? And the next year's overlays? That's one question. And then the second question is, what is that engineer's expertise? Are they greater than your engineering expertise? Because you are, you're a civil engineer, yes?
Right. I'm a civil. Yeah, and, yeah, it's true that in the past, you know, standard, one time we worked with county, and they charged us 15% for the overhead for engineering. That was preliminary in construction engineering. It's a pretty heavy hit, but it's common in the industry. When we went out and requested proposals last year, we had the same thing, around 15%. It seems heavy to me as well, and that's why I'm trying to cap this at 10%. And also, taking your hint and direction as well, I agree that I think a lot of the preliminary engineering is a lot of coring, a lot of studies out there, and we all end up doing an inch and a half overlay or an inch and a quarter overlay, even though the consulting firms would like us to do two or three or a full rebuild. We can't afford it, we're not going to do that, so we do these thinner overlays. So I think for the upfront, we can standardize and really minimize costs. And then for the quality control during the construction, it is important to have on-site people that specialize in it and take some, we have specifications that require a certain compaction, so you need to grab those samples and get them to a lab, and that's all part of that CQA. But I think we can stay well below, for instance, I think our budget for road overlays might be off the cuff, maybe $1.3 million for this upcoming year, so that really, that $100,000 cap would keep us closer to 8% or 7%, but I think we can even push that down further.
Okay.
Entertain a motion if there's no further discussion?
My motion that we approve the on-call civil engineering services for, where am I on here? On-call city of engineering services and not to exceed the amount of $80,000 per year for a five-year term, and authorize the city manager to execute amendments to these service agreements to provide additional street overlaying engineering as determined necessary by the public work director in an amount not to exceed 10% or $100,000, whatever's less.
Second? All right, I'm entertaining a second. I should not as chair.
You're fine.
We're not really.
If I can't...
Call the roll.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wyrick?
Yes. All right, that's passed, and we're done with the consent calendar. As I mentioned before, we are going to be skipping item number two. It's being moved to the end of the agenda, and we're going to move directly into item number three, short-term vacation rentals, prohibition enforcement, and as I, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be very, I'm going to be very flexible about any and all comments about short-term rentals in this agenda item. Mr. McClary, can you give your report on the current enforcement status? Oh, and one other comment before, I'm sorry, Mr. McClary. Given the fact that just the three of us are here, the intent is to hear the report, take comments, have short discussion, but not take important actions relative to the staff report until we have all five council people present at the next regular meeting. Thank you. Mr. McClary.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. I'll keep my report fairly brief. As you know, this was on for discussion and is back tonight, and we expect to continue it again. We're asking to provide direction to the new city manager and city attorney regarding the available tools for enforcement on the city's prohibition of short-term transient and vacation rentals of property of less than 30 days, other than lawfully permitted hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts. Specifically, we're looking to provide some direction to staff on whether the council would like to draft an ordinance to increase the maximum fine for misdemeanor violation of the Ojai municipal code from the current $500 per violation to $1,000 per violation, which is the maximum permitted under state law. Also looking for some direction to staff on whether the council would like us to draft an ordinance to prohibit advertisements for unlawful short-term transient or vacation rentals of property for less than 30 days, other than, again, lawfully permitted hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts operating in compliance with applicable regulation mechanisms. As everybody is well aware, this has been an item that's been discussed before the city council on a number of occasions. The council did make a decision at one point to begin the enforcement effective June 1st. As of this date, we have identified close to 60 properties that we suspect are operating or have advertised, or have been operating as a short-term rental. We have sent over 20 letters identifying suspected properties and asking them to cease and desist their advertising. We're also working on several properties that are, would be subject to citation. It's a long-term process, of course, to move this out and to really get it to be effective. And it's going to take some time, and it's going to, like I said, it's going to take a sustained effort, I think, to really make an impact on this. There's a lot of things that are changing out there quite rapidly. What we've seen from monitoring on the internet is that a lot of these suspected properties are changing way that they have, changing their online presence, they're changing their advertisements. It's hard to say whether it's because they are changing their practices, or if they're just simply changing their advertising. So we're going to, we are continuing, obviously, to identify properties and continue to send letters, and looking for further direction from council tonight.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Until we hear from the public.
Okay. Well, then we'll hear from the public. I'll make one comment before we start, and that is that the county has just come out with a staff report on short-term rentals in the unincorporated areas, and that they are planning a hearing, I believe, on August 30th. I could be wrong on that. The point being is that this is getting, August, August 2nd, sorry, excuse me. This is all on the county website, if you're interested, because I know a lot of people in the valley are interested outside of the city limits and the city sphere of influence on this issue. And I skimmed the SCAF report today, and it identifies two major areas in the unincorporated area of the county of concern with respect to short-term rentals, and of course, the Ojai Valley is one of those two areas, in the outside of the city limits and sphere of influence. With that, we have some comments. First of all, Marcy, Marcy Toshner?
Hi.
Hello.
I have the statement, I'm reading the statement of Anna-Lor Loopold. It's a very powerful statement. She couldn't make it tonight. Good evening, city council and members of the community. My name is Anna-Lor Loopold. Sadly, I cannot be in attendance for tonight's meeting. However, I am well aware of the benefits and pitfalls our little town is experiencing due to the vacation rental debacle. A bit of history, I was born at Ojai Hospital and raised by local entrepreneurs with my three sisters in Miramonte. My mother is native to our beautiful town, dating back to the first birth of a family member in the early 1800s. She is descendant of the Lopez family that built the adobe in Matilla Canyon, and our family has resided in the valley ever since. This puts us in the ballpark of 10 to 13 generations of Ojai residents. My father used to run and own a restaurant locally from 1971 through the late 90s, and though he was born in New Mexico, to an American and German immigrant, he spent his childhood in Ojai and continues to reside in Oakview. I attended the local elementary school, ran for Ojai Roadrunners, continued my education at Matilla and Noroff, and was senior class president in 2008. After I graduated, I was blessed with a beautiful baby girl. It was always my dream to have her grow up in my hometown, learning as I did, growing as I did, and loving it as I do. She was the third generation on my father's side to attend Miramonte, with several teachers having taught her mother, aunts, and even grandparents. As life happened, we found ourselves incapable of continuing to live in town due to affordability. Our next step was to move away. I'd continue my education to better myself and allow for more financial stability, save money, and move back home. We did just that. After two years in Washington State, we came back to Ojai. I got a wonderful position as office manager of a speech therapy clinic in Newbury Park, and yet, we still couldn't afford to rent a home here. Rental after rental, we were denied due to income, having a child, and the home was not suitable for children, or because of an outdoor cat, all because vacation rentals offer a high monthly income to the homeowner by renting to multiple parties with no pets or children in one month. Don't get me wrong, it's a smart racket, but it is not conducive to Ojai as a living, breathing town. We are not just a tourist destination. We are seniors, retirees, families, single adults, and children wishing to live and thrive in our community. Let's not forget that we are a community that's banded together multiple times during multiple financial crises in order to save our schools. One question that has nagged me throughout this whole situation is, with a town so proud of the Chumash involvement still present, why would we shut out an entire chapter of our town's history by forcing those of us who have thrived over 200 years in the same location out of their homes and everything they've known and loved? The only answer for those using Airbnb and others of the like is money. To conclude, as an Ojai native, I am against short-term vacation rentals.
Thank you, Marcy. Appreciate it. Next, we have Beverly Parcher-Bolt. I promised I'd give you another opportunity.
I promise that this is, only has to do with enforcement. Good evening. I would like to thank the council and the staff on all their efforts that they put forth to finding ways to curb the continued violations by vacation rental owners. I understand what a difficult job it is to balance those needs of the residents, and yet be responsible for enforcing the many laws and regulations that exist for our protection. I live next door to a vacation rental and guest house that is vacant. They continue to use it as a short-term rental. Even though the council probably has sent them a letter, and I have spoken to them personally and said it's illegal to rent, they continue to do so. Today, I'm not going to complain to you, like I have before, what it's like to live next door to a short-term rental. It's horrendous. I just want you to know that in the last several weeks, I've been forced to use your online complaint system, which works out pretty well, except for you can't attach any kind of pictures or anything to it. So I did have to come down to the office and add that into a complaint. I wanted to notify you that even though you have sent out the cease and desist letters to a lot of the short-term rentals, the one next door to me is not paying any attention to you. Furthermore, the local agent of this particular illegal rental is telling renters that it is legal to rent, and she also advertises them as being available for a two-day minimum. This is right out in the open, right on the internet. Because of this information, I would like you to check into how local resident, how local rental agents can be prevented from advertising and renting out these illegal businesses. Thank you again for continuing your work and enforcing our zoning laws and protecting the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Beverly raises an interesting question. Do we have the capacity, or can we have the capacity, for attachments to be made on the online complaint, to be submitted on the online complaint facility?
Let me look into it. My initial thought was maybe at the very minimum, we could identify if you have any attachments, an email address that you could send.
Right, something along those lines.
But let me look into it, and there may be a way that we can add that option in, onto the website, so they don't have to take that extra step.
It would be helpful, particularly in this, in this kind of situation.
Sure. Looking at that.
Okay. Mr. Francis, Tom Francis.
Good evening, Mayor Protam Wyrick and council. As I always say, thank you for all you do, because it's, I just appreciate that you guys do this work for our community for little or no compensation, so, thank you. If I'm a homeowner, I'm for helping our renters. If I'm a homeowner, I'm for helping our renters. I think that without Airbnb, they're already at a disadvantage. You know, those of us that own our homes, we get to make the decision about when we're going to move. Renters sometimes don't get to make that decision. And, you know, what's really bothering me more and more about Airbnb is the fact that it puts renters in our community in the untenable position of competing with moneyed tourists for space to live. And I think our founding fathers and mothers of Ojai understood the importance of having zoning that separates our residential neighborhoods from areas that we have hotels. And I think they did that for a good reason, and I think it's worked really well for Ojai for a long, long time. So, I just, I want to commend the council for standing strong, for keeping Ojai's longstanding zoning rules the way they are, because they make sense, they've worked for Ojai for a long time, and I think they'll continue to make sense. So, that's really the long and short of it for me. Let's help the renters, let's keep our zoning intact. I also wanted to just briefly touch on the school topic. I mean, Kelsey and Beverly read for Kelsey, you know, a very eloquent, what would you call it, argument for helping our schools by sticking to our zoning. I just want to say that financial viability is critical, and I understand that one of our local elementary schools narrowly avoided closure due to financial constraints. And let's, again, look at the facts, okay? Airbnb is in our community right now, and they have a hollowing effect. Every living space that is on Airbnb and offered to tourists is not offered to a family, okay? Tourists, sometimes they have children, but they bring their children here, but those children don't go to our schools. Therefore, that does not up our school enrollment, it diminishes our school enrollment, okay? And so, Airbnb is directly responsible for diminishing enrollments in our schools, okay? So, if we want our school system to remain viable, again, all we've got to do is what you guys have already done, which is stick to our longstanding zoning rules, please. I have a daughter, she goes to the Ojai schools, and, you know, what's more important in our community than our education system? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Before we bring it back to council, is there anyone who wishes to comment on this, that agenda item broadly defined that has not submitted a card? This is your opportunity. All right, bring it back to council. Questions and comments?
My only comment. I don't have really any questions about the staff report. I think that this was a lot easier to read, and we know the options that are in front of us. Personally, I know we don't have two council members here, but I would rather at least start directing staff to do, to put some of these tools in action so that we could start doing more than cease and desist letters. I don't know how the fellow council members feel about that, but I know that we want to be respectful to other council members, but I just think that if the majority is here and the majority could agree upon some tools, I'll be happy to support that, because I think we're just kicking this down the can and we're bringing it up to the public, but we're making no, we're directing no direction. We're not applying any action, and I'm ready. I mean, I don't know how you guys feel.
Let me respond to that with my own question and clarification, because I was going to ask the question, right now, our code allows a, I know, our resolution of the council and our code allows a $500 citation fine up to?
I was just going to speak to that.
Go to it, and then I may expand.
Certainly. Just to clarify the point, the staff's present authority allows both the cease and desist letters, which are demanding cessation of advertising. We can't fine for ads yet until the code is amended, but we can certainly demand they take down the ad for illegal land use. And second, we have the power at the moment to fine $500 per violation, and staff is in the process of compiling the evidence to produce those fines. There's a bit of a lag between when a rental happens and when the review shows up on the website that we can use to produce the fine or other proof comes in our hand. In order to impose a fine, the city has to be able to prove that the violation occurred, and it takes some, there's a bit of a lag between when there's a rental post-June 1st and when the city has the proof to then impose the fine. So, at the moment, we have those tools in the toolbox. In addition, if, under existing power, the city could bring forward a criminal prosecution, although, again, as I've noted previously, I'm not confident we'll be able to get a jury to throw someone in jail for unlawful land use. But we have the power to impose the fines, and if there was an egregious case, the city has the power to bring a civil lawsuit, which would require direction by the council to initiate the lawsuit that would be discussed in open session under consideration of litigation. Pardon me, closed session, not open session. So, those are the tools we have right now, under the current direction and power, so it's not just the cease and desist advertising letters, but also the amended citations. And I understand that the code compliance staff has been putting that evidence together.
Which is part of my, I'd like a question on that exact point. Can you give the public and us on the council any sort of order of magnitude, guideline, idea? If you have a situation which is totally egregious, just flat out, they've gotten the cease and desist letter, they don't care, they keep doing, it's no attempt to hide the activity, I'm trying to make it easy for you, okay? And they continue with the illegal activity, how long does it take for the cease and desist letter and that kind of a situation to a citation and assessing a fine?
It's a matter of if we have the proof, the letter can get out as soon as staff can draft it, and I look at it. And I've already drafted for staff the templates to do all of that, they just have to fill in the information. The trick is getting the proof of the violation.
That's what I was trying to make easy for you, assuming the proof is obvious, because people were just flagrantly engaged in the activity.
If we have obvious proof, we should be able to get the letter out fairly quickly.
With the citation?
Right, with the citation. The letter imposing the site. The letter is the citation.
Okay. And then, before I open up, Councilperson Haney, I'm reluctant to go ahead and provide a lot of direction with just the three of us.
Right.
But on the other hand, I would be amenable to perhaps asking for a report at the next meeting in preparation for all five of us to be here about your suggestions for things that should be done in our ordinances to make enforcement more tractable and practical.
More so than what we have here?
Well, I'm just saying, if there's anything beyond what you have here.
Understood. I can certainly do that.
Okay. Councilman Haney?
Matthew, I think, I just want some clarification that's, that might help you in preparation for what Councilman Wyrick's asking. We talked about raising the fine from $500 to $1,000. Is that for every, does that, we're just not raising the fine on vacation rentals. We're raising the fine on all violations up to $1,000 if they're a misdemeanor like this? Is that what we're doing?
That would be one of the options.
So, we can parse it and set the fine limit up to $1,000 for a specific misdemeanor?
The way you have to do it would be to raise the language in the code, section that cited 10, where'd it go? Section 1, 1203, thank you. You have to raise that current limit of 500 up to 1,000. Then, in the schedule of fees and fines, you could walk any particular activity back down to 500 or any other level you set. So, the code has to be amended to raise the default fine for a misdemeanor up to 1,000.
So, that would be all misdemeanor?
And that would be all.
Then you have to back it down.
Then you, exactly. You raise the floor up, and then you back it down, if you want to back some particular activity that doesn't warrant a $1,000 fine, back down to 500. And what I would suggest is between now and the next meeting, we might hunt down the fine and fee schedule and give you a sense of what other fines would have, what you might want to consider walking up or down.
Okay. Then, the second question is, are the fines based on a daily use, a weekend use, a weekly use? So, in other words, our code enforcement official has to, if we want a fine for the 29th, and then we observe the same activity on the 30th, and the same activity on the 31st, we're talking each of those being one misdemeanor, not all three days being one?
Right. It's each night that there is a rental of a short-term rental for less than 30 days. Each rental, each night rental is a separate violation. It's a violation per day situation. So, if you had a weekend rental of three days on a holiday weekend, that's three fines, three administrative citation fines. Depending on, the trick, of course, is finding the proof.
And then here, there's a sentence here that says, "When an enforcement officer determines that a violation has occurred." What are the determining factors? Is it a general observation? Is it a complaint and an observation? Is it, you know, what is our code enforcement officer specifically looking at?
What we need to show is evidence that on a cold record can be presented in the end to a court to show by preponderance of the evidence that it is more likely than not that there was an unlawful short-term rental. A complaint alone doesn't cut it, because a complaint alone is a he said, he said, or he said, she said. Observing people at a house who don't live there doesn't cut it, because we can't prove that they're not friends or relatives. What you need is hard evidence of a transaction that enabled the rental, a transaction that enabled the person staying. What's most effective and easiest to prove is a copy of their Airbnb or VRBO or other advertisement with a review, "Thanks for the great weekend." Weekend is a short, is less than 30 days. Screenshot that, connect that ad to a property, perhaps by showing a screenshot of a Google Street View, match an exterior photo on the ad to an address, or otherwise provide perhaps a declaration connecting that ad to an actual address. Use the city's, the property records to convert the address to a property owner, then find the property owner.
So, you don't necessarily have a sense that our code enforcement officer is going to go knocking on individuals' doors and asking for some proof of ownership or some proof of even rental agreement?
Right. We don't have the power to do that. The Fourth Amendment stops that.
So, again, this has been my concern through this whole process, is do we have the funding to do this? Do we have the dedicated resources? In other words, right now, our building official has a multitude of tasks, and the council has to ask ourselves, are we willing to dedicate that individual specifically to close this door on this issue? And if so, we have to agree that that's our priority of that individual. And then, in the same token, we have to be able to look at our building and safety department and say that you're not going to have the ability to utilize this code enforcement, and now in turn, we may have to increase the budget, or I know that that, the building and safety is out to bid right now, and I know we've asked them to include in it a building and safety official or some way to provide that service. So, alls I'm trying to say is if we're going to do this, and I know we are going to do this, that we just prepare, we prepare ourselves for the cost of doing it and dedicating the resources to doing it and doing it right. That's always been my issue with this. And then, the last thing, I think specifically I covered that with my question about dedicating building and safety, not building and safety, but Planning Division code enforcement officer and dedicating that individual specifically to this 60 or 65 or 66 or even more, along with the time that we're going to be requesting of you and the additional monies that that's going to, that that's going to take. So, again, I think these are some questions that someone's going to have to answer. I know that we want to remove this from our system, but there's a cost to it. And I think that we need to recognize what that cost is, and I think we have to then ensure the fact that we're going to get the results or the intended results that we want for the amount of money and time and effort we're going to put into it.
Mayor Protem, if I could add a couple more comments?
Please.
Just in terms of the public, good comments, Randy, I think you've identified the question. For the public, I don't want to suggest that complaints aren't helpful. They are helpful. We just, the complaint starts the process. A complaint alone isn't the end that results immediately in a citation, but the complaints are part of the raw material. And if you're going to provide a complaint and you have the evidence, or perhaps you have a little more information than just an address, provide what you have through the complaint processes. Additionally, if, for example, you're perusing Airbnb and you see, and you see one and you know that that ad is 123 Main Street, including your complaint, some information on how you know that that ad is that property. Because one of the things that we have to be able to prove, if any of these get to a court, is how we know this ad, and the ads don't have an address, the ads don't usually have exterior shots, how we know that that ad is a certain property. And that, connecting that dot on a cold record is one of the key elements of these things. So, I don't want to suggest that complaints aren't helpful or shouldn't be provided. It's just a complaint, it's the beginning of the process, not the end of it.
Well, I want to comment on that, because one of the advantages we have, being a small city.
Exactly.
In having so many long-term community members, residents, people who've been born and raised here, many people can look at a picture and go, "I know where that is."
And one of the things I would suggest to them is if...
And that we need to make sure we find the best way of getting that information into the system.
And one of the best ways to capture that is to write out an explanation of how you know that's that property. For example, I know that that ad is the house that has the red front door, and then the staff can go and confirm, take a picture of the red front door with the address, and then we can connect the dots.
And nothing wrong with someone with their complaint, including that documentation, hopefully that they could then attach to that a complaint on the online facility.
And if we can't figure out how to get it on the online facility, at least email it.
Or suggest an email, there's absolutely proper to do that.
Very much so. That would be, that will be quite helpful.
I would also think that if that citizen is willing to go to all that work, that more than likely, that citizens would be available to help us in the removal of that site, period. You know, if they're willing to turn it in, they're willing to stand up in a court of law and attest to that also.
Agreed. And that would be if we, if these fines end up in a court, that'd be one of the ways we'd have to go. And that'd be great, if, perhaps if folks are willing to do so, note that on your complaint form as well.
Councilman Laura?
No, I have no questions. Again, I said, I'm ready to direct staff and do some things to kind of move on with the process, but if this council doesn't want to proceed that direction, then I'll wait for my comments until the other council members come to give them direction on where I would like to, them to get and compile and enforce this ordinance.
Let me ask one more question before, and then I'll, we'll focus on that, and see what the three of us feel like. I would like to make a couple comments. One on Councilman Haney's point about compliance, code compliance activity. I think we need to think very carefully as part of this entire process about the issue of having some, my understanding is sometimes we have the same person doing a building inspection that's also doing a code compliance on a, on something completely different from building inspections. Is that true or not?
Well...
My point being is those are really different skill sets.
Yeah, I was actually going to, I'm sorry, I'm not actually directly answering your question, I acknowledge that upfront. We have made this, made our code compliance inspector, we have given this a priority for him to work on, and what we've tried to do is to free up that individual's time so they could focus on this, and if we have other issues that are out there that need to be addressed, those are being handled through our contract building and safety staff.
I guess what I'm trying to go at with this is that one thing that we might want to look at in terms of report to council at the next meeting is what's out there in terms of contract services specializing in this type of enforcement.
Okay.
There are companies that are springing up that focus on that, and I think we ought to see what might be available in terms of that type of contract specialty. And, you know, I'm not saying I'm for it necessarily, but I think we ought to at least be aware of the options. That's all.
The only thing I would add to that would be, my philosophy is much like with advertising, it's really only effective when it's sustained.
Yes.
Sustainable. You know, if we were to do a real hard push for a couple of months and then back off and slack off on the effort, I think you would probably see them coming back quite a bit, so, just saying that I understand why you're making that thought, because to have somebody who could really just stay at it for a long term.
Exactly.
And certainly, perhaps doing that through...
Specialized focus.
Through contract might be a good way to accomplish that, but I'm getting ahead of myself here.
That'll just be a future option. So, I'll bring it back to Councilman Laura's question, whether the three of us want to provide any direction. provide any direction. At this time, I assume part of what you'd be suggesting is whether or not we want to give direction to have some drafts of ordinance amendments for us to look at at the next meeting?
Yeah. If not, at least just some brief bullet points of what that means because you've identified that either give you direction on drafting an ordinance or basically if we, if we all agree, if we don't want to agree to an ordinance, drafting an ordinance at least-
Have a term sheet.
Yeah, add like a term sheet to the advertisement ordinance. That's what I would, I would like, more information about that.
Councilman Haney?
Well, if we're going to do it, let's do it. I say right now, we take the code enforcement officer off of any other responsibilities and specifically assign him to vacation rentals, period. That's what, that would be the direction that I would take. And I know that you've said, I know that you said that that's what you're doing, but I just would like it to come from the council stating that that's specifically what we'd like to do. And then the other thing that I would like to do along with that is some accountability as to the number of hours that he has spent or she has spent up to date and track those hours specifically from this point moving forward so that we can track the value of the service that we're providing our citizens.
Comment, Mr. McClary?
With all due respect, just to point of clarity, council needs to give me direction and I will give direction to the staff.
Correct.
So if I, if council gives me one airplane and we have three fires burning, I will make the decision as to which is the most pressing fire and I will dispatch the resources appropriately.
I agree. I, could I try to attempt rewording your direction?
Go ahead.
I think what you're, I think where you're coming from is that if, if there are code compliance issues, you want this code compliance issue to be a priority.
Right, number one, we're going to do it.
Even though that still provides flexibility in terms of other pressing needs that might occur. Let's say that's a, there's a public safety code compliance issue, you don't want that ignored. You don't want exclusive focus. You want simply to express a sense of counsel in terms of priority for the use of the code compliance.
Well, our code enforcement officer right now is part-time. So maybe the first thing that we need to do is, is to move that gentleman's classification from part-time to full-time or maybe we need to find another, neither. I don't know if we're, I know a part-time hour is 1,020. I don't know if we can work that individual up to a 30-hour work week or up to a 39-hour work week and still classify him as part-time. That's something that you'd have to answer too. But what I'm saying is, is if, if this is the issue of the community, let's attack it, let's solve it, let's go after it. And if we need to provide additional hours for other enforcement responsibilities or duties, let's do that also. But, but it's clearly being said by this community that they want action.
May I suggest that perhaps a way that we could provide direction would be to ask for staff recommendations for putting more resources into this enforcement. There are various options for doing that. And let, at the next meeting, we have, we have proposals to discuss. Because that might in fact be outside contracting in addition-
Correct.
To hiring another part-time person that knows this area particularly well or ramping up the existing. Those are all options that I think we need staff input on.
My, my current direction, as I understand it, as we operate it, is that we have made it the highest priority and we will continue to operate on that and we'd be happy to come back with some further options.
Mayor Potem, Wyrick. Mr. McClary, in that, in that understanding of our direction, do you have, do you feel like you have clear direction whether picking option one, two, or three that you have detailed on page 3-2 and 3-3 in terms of the, either going by infractions or by administrative citation and administrative order or through the hearing of an officer?
I think I might speak to that one. As we understand the current direction, it is to develop the record and then send out, at the moment, two things. One being to all of the ones for which we have proof of an ad, send out a letter demanding the ad be dropped, be taken down, with the understanding that until the code is changed, we can't fine them for the ad. And for all the ones where we have proof of a night rented, as discussed with the caveats before, sending out, fining them, the $500 administrative citation fine. That's our understanding of what we're, should be doing and what we are working to do, or staff is working to do with the templates that I gave them.
So it's a, it's kind of a, more of a second, hybrid second option.
It's a two-pronged approach, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So if I could summarize, attempt to summarize a direction from council with this item, it would be to come back to the next council meeting with a term sheet on items 2A and B and recommendations for additional resources for enforcement.
I, I mean, I would like to also see sending letters to the realtors and just letting them know that this is the law, just getting an administrative record. I think that it's important for us, if we're going to be, if we're going to come down to also be proactive in letting the, our constituents know that we're going to really try to enforce this law.
Councilman Haney?
I would just like to add that this is a cat and mouse game.
Are you, I was trying to say, if you're okay with the letters?
I'm okay with this letter.
Okay, so we're add that to the direction.
I'm sorry. But I just wanted to go, this is a cat and mouse game and the cat and mouse is being played with the, with the holders of our houses that don't live in our community. I'd like to think that the people that live in our community understand where we're at and that, that we're, I'm trying to word it right, and it's not that I don't want to offend anybody, but I just want to word it right, that I would like to think that the people that live here understand where we're at and that there is a disagreement over this and that we're trying to solve it. It's the people that don't live in our community that don't really care about us. And that's where I think what we need to look at this, in this cat and mouse game of enforcement, is to actually try to address that if we can. I don't know if we can, but for instance, again, on the corner of Pleasant and Daly, on the northeast corner, there's a person that lives there that is a vacation rental. Their trash cans are left out every week. I mean, there's no disguising what they're doing and we've had this conversation for how many months now and they're still doing it. They don't care. So again, I'm just saying, there's, there's people in this community that, that are in it and understand it. And then there's people that don't live here that don't care about us. And so again, I'm just saying, it's a cat and mouse game with them and we need to, we need to go after those people. That's where I would specifically put a lot of my resources and my emphasis is on, on those folks, so.
With that, I will entertain a motion for continuing this item with direction to the next-
Move to continue this item with the direction specified by Mayor Potem Wyrick.
And I'll second.
All right.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Wyrick?
Yes. Moving on to, and thank you, everyone. Moving on to agenda item number four, which is the subject of a term sheet providing overview proposed amendment to section 10-2.1709, second residential units. I see our community development director approaching for a staff report, I imagine.
She just came back from dinner.
And with Mr. McClary's consent, she has the floor?
Yes, she does.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. As you see before you tonight, there's a term sheet providing an overview of the planning commission's recommendations to the city council regarding amendments to the municipal code section, second residential units. As you know, the background on this is that the planning commission and the city council met way back in 2015 to discuss, at a joint meeting, to discuss some of the work programs that the planning commission would be undertaking. And it was the thought at that time that since they were just completing the compliance, second residential unit compliance program, that they used that expertise that they had gotten from discussing that particular program at length for a couple of years and move right into working on the actual ordinance, second residential ordinance. They have taken that on. They met in October, November, and December, and then subsequently in April. And there was a little bit of lapse in there as we were working on some important things like the hospital and things like that. If you want to know why, there was a little bit of lapse. And so there have been various materials presented. Your pack is rather thick tonight because I gave you everything that they got so that you'd kind of know what they looked at and what they didn't look at. We also had two presentations. One was from the tiny home folks that came and gave a presentation and they also came before you and gave a presentation. And then we had John Douglas, who was the city's consultant who handled the, the most recent version of the housing element and got it adopted, to give sort of a primer on what really do we need to accomplish in that housing element, how the second residential is fit into the arena and what needs to be done. And that was mostly done because at that time, presently, most of our planning commissioners have not gone through a housing element approval, you know, cycle. So with that said, that's kind of the background of how they got to where they were. They've, I've provided the matrix for you and it's just as simple as this. It's, you know, the code and the boxes and what they want to do. And they're, and we tried to word, word it in such a way as this is where they'd like to go and then the question to you is whether you agree and what direction you want to give them. And I think that then it's pretty, I'm open to any questions you might have. If I have knowledge, I can, I can help put details if you need. Really important, I think, as we get down to the second unit, I mean, I'm sorry, the tiny home concept, and I think they were looking for city council to give them sort of specific direction where they wanted to go on that because, you know, you've also had the presentation and there was some issue of, you know, really as far as the tiny home presentation, whether, you know, that belonged as a separate entity aside from the second units or whether it needed to be incorporated in it. And particularly whether or not you wanted to look for there to actually be a unit there or a space for a tiny home, I think was the kind of the issues. And it's not really articulated. I think they were just leaving it open-ended for you. And with that, I'd just like to say that like in anything else, we always provide the fiscal impact and as you know, this is a city-sponsored tax amendment, so it is really funded by the general fund.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the matrix structure presentation. It makes it a lot easier to, to look through things point by point. I do appreciate it. Not sure we needed to have every possible property here in the, in the listing.
Mayor, I thought she was providing that for direct mailing when you run, when you run in two years.
Well, that's always a problem, but you know, I, it's easier to cut than to add, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll bring back, do you council have any questions? We have a number of speaker cards on this issue.
Well, let's let the public speak.
I do have some, some questions. The CUP, could you tell us what, could you clarify the reasoning of the CUP on some of the, the proposed changes? For example, when it talks about the, let me pull it up here, when it talks about the square footage, why was added in that recommendation? There's, there's two parts on this. Understanders, the maximum size of floor area of the second unit not exceeds 640 square feet. And then they recommend it still provides a maximum by the right to be 640 square feet, but allow larger with a conditional use permit up to a maximum of 850 square feet. And then it goes on and explains about the CUP. What's the thought process behind that one? And then also behind, where's the second one? Talks about, on, on item number nine, where it says the primary unit, it's on page 4-5, it talks about the primary unit shall meet a minimum requirement and then it talks about their recommendation. What, what's the?
Okay. So the way it works is under the state law, you have to provide an opportunity for people to do second residential units by, by right. So that's just something that you have to do. It does provide also that you can provide a tiered process by where you allow a little bit more city discretion through the CUP process. So it's tiered off to allow those that they think don't need additional review, and that would be the 640. I think the planning commissioners discussed this at length and I think the issue was they wanted to have additional, an additional mechanism to try to look at some of the impacts that going bigger, sort of a case-by-case issue going bigger. So one of the things that would happen if you have a CUP and you could, you know, they would be, you know, reviewing this and maybe putting more details to this proposal would be that you could require things like sustainable practices, you know, retrofitting the main house or maybe making the second unit more energy efficient, blowhole toilets and things of that nature. So they want, they were really interested in the impacts and the only way to really get that, get from here to there is to do it under a CUP. So in a sense, it's kind of a quid pro quo. We're letting you have a bigger unit and what the city gets out of that is the city gets more, a more efficient unit beyond, above and beyond what they could get under the, by right. And so that was, and that hasn't been completely flushed out, their ideas, but that's kind of where they wanted to go with that. And so that kind of goes back to the CUP with parking and the CUP with parking is, you know, hey, the idea was rather than just to wholesale remove the requirement to not have parking in the front yard setback or something of that nature was to allow them to come before planning commission and then, again, them to look at it as a case-by-case basis and then provide parking in different areas, whether it be tandem. I mean, there's a lot of, Ojai is not regimented or what we call cookie cutter community. So it's a lot of times, it's really hard to have, to create a regulation that really takes into every consider, every consideration, every lot type or where the project might be or where the parking might be. So the idea is that they want to allow flexibility, they just want them to come in and do a CUP to exercise that.
Could, could an applicant himself come in and do a CUP for, for any of those requirements?
You mean an applicant, is it, is it at a skill level where, where a layman can do it? Yes.
Yeah. So they could request to do a 1,200 square foot second unit and it did have to go through the whole CUP process?
So, so am I understanding what you're, is the question to me whether or not it requires a professional to process the CUP?
No, I guess I'm asking whether, whether an applicant that wants to do a second unit and they have enough square footage on their property to say they have a two-acre property and their house is, their, their primary house is, is small, is say 1,500 square feet. They want to do, or just slightly over second unit size?
Mm-hmm.
Or what am I trying? I just, could an applicant come in the city and apply for a second unit that is over 640 square feet? Or would that not classify as a second unit?
I see Matt reaching for you because he's going to tell you what the state law tells you about that.
Mayor and council, on that one, an applicant could apply for a larger than 640 square foot second unit right now. They do not get that by right. State law only requires two, 640 units, square feet by right. If they want more than 640, they would need to come in and apply for designer view permit and a variance because at the moment, the max size of a second unit under the current code is 640 square feet. So they need to provide-
Unless we change that. Unless we change that.
Unless, of course, you change it.
But you, so, but what I'm hearing, the CUP that the planning commission is proposing will not necessarily give you that by right.
That's right. A CUP is anything but by right.
Yeah.
They're completely two different tracks.
So is that, to me, I, I'm kind of lost in wondering if we're really adding that flexibility without adding another layer? Because I, I see that if an applicant wanted to come in and do, add whatever, or change, he would have to go to a CUP. Why add as a proposed amendment, a CUP process in there?
Because the standard is significantly different. At the moment, to get more than 640 square feet, you have to apply for and receive a variance, which requires showing that your property has some unique circumstance and that prohibits you from otherwise enjoying the, a second unit and that the granting of that additional oversized second unit wouldn't be a special privilege. That's a fairly hard showing to me. I'm not saying it's impossible, but it's fairly hard. If you structured it instead, allowing more than 640 square feet by CUP as proposed, the standards are quite different and it's instead a matter of-
How is it different?
Because the findings-
What were the?
Because the findings, the findings are different. The findings for a conditional use permit are not that you have a special circumstance and not that it wouldn't be granting a special privilege. Rather, the findings for a conditional use permit are, in a nutshell, that it's consistent with the general plan, consistent with the neighborhood character, and would be appropriate for the community. It's a lower standard.
What I'm hearing is it's still called a CUP, but it has different standards.
No, I, maybe.
I think, if I could interject myself, I think what we're trying to say is that a CUP has different, is a different bar than a variance.
Than the variance.
That's what they're saying.
It's a different bar.
Exactly. It's a whole different permit, a whole different set of standards.
Findings.
Whether it's a good thing or not is another matter.
Because they're both called a CUP.
No, no, no. Variance is a variance.
So, okay, so I guess what I'm trying to get at is, so in, if an applicant was to come and ask for a bigger or modifying their parking requirements to their second units, not only would they have to go through a CUP, they would also have to go through a variance?
No. If the proposed changes made by the planning commission.
No, but not if the proposed, I'm talking about separate.
Yeah, let me answer it, let me see if I can answer it this way.
This is all subject to what we decide and pass.
Right. Under current law, that to go oversized or to vary the parking or otherwise requires a variance. And that strict standard of showing that it's not a special circum, showing that there is a special circumstance and that it's not a special privilege is, if you accept the term sheet here, if you change the rules as proposed by the planning commission, then you would not need a variance. Instead, you would only need a CUP, which is a lower standard.
Which is, okay. I guess I was confusing. I guess, yeah, I guess I was confusing that in order to get a conditional use permit for maybe a zoning, you could do that for whatever land use. But, and I guess I was confusing that there's also another process before you get that there to allow for that conditional use permit.
You know, we're kind of, we're debating the term sheet now rather than just a question and answer. I'd like to, I know Councilman Haney has a question, and I want to get to the public comment.
Could I just add a little bit more on?
Maybe.
Okay. So all I want to say, I just want to be very clear about why.
We want to get bogged down in the weeds here.
No, I don't want to get bogged down. Why there's a CUP. My planning commissioners do not feel when you make something by right, you're stating that under any circumstances in that zone district, whether it's in this lot or that lot or this lot, whatever it is across universally across the zone district, it's good. A CUP allows for you to take it on a case-by-case basis because they cannot draft a ordinance that meets every lot size or every particular situation in that zone district. So it's just a different mechanism to allow them to address the uniqueness of Ojai.
Right. And that's the purpose of the term sheet way of communication here to decide whether or not we agree with that policy direction or not. That's it.
And it's important for me, though, to understand that process because I was confusing two different things. So that's, that's why I wanted to clarify that upfront so that, okay, I'm in the same page as they are.
Okay. Councilman Haney?
Two quick questions. What was the goal? What do you believe the goal of the second unit housing was in the community?
In the community or for the planning commissioners?
No, for the community.
So I believe, I believe that it's part, the second residential unit is a direction from the state of California in and of itself to provide more opportunities for affordable housing or just more opportunities in general, but specific to the direction of affordable housing.
So then, so to simply state it, it would be to provide more affordable housing? Or how about this? Why don't we start with the fact, how about the opportunity for more housing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So, because I don't want to, you know, go too deep into this real quick. But that's the goal, is to provide more. And then the second part, the second part of the goal would be the affordability of it. And we could have a debate on affordability in this community, but that's the second part of the goal. So the goal is, one, to enhance housing, and, two, the secondary would be affordable housing. So I'll come back to this.
Yeah, we're going to debate it.
But a CUP, one, increases the cost. Two, it places conditions on what we're trying to achieve, and it just seems to me that it's going to elongate the process. And the whole idea behind this is to simplify the process. And it seems like we're throwing a little ball in here that allows it to roll around and.
And again, what I would say is, this is a debate among us after we hear from the public, okay? And I, and I, and I'll only add that to the answer for the public consumption, the public purpose here is not defined just by state statute. It's also defined as a program in the housing element of our general plan, which is very, very specific about looking at our conforming. We are, this whole exercise is one of the programs of our housing element to look at the conforming element of the second unit program in terms of promoting housing supply and availability. So I just want to make that clear, that that's also part of our general plan. Okay?
Correct.
All right. I want to get to the public, Mr. Summers, unless you are wanting to stop me.
The only point I was going to add is that not only is it a housing element, but that housing element is itself driven in part by state law. So both the state, Sacramento is requiring this, and the council that adopted the housing element has affirmed that this is the goal.
And we should be evaluating the term sheet and any ordinance amendments in terms of internal, horizontal and vertical consistency with our general plan.
Correct.
Okay. All right. With all that, sorry, everyone, I'm going to pull the card for a member of our planning commissioner that's here to come up and maybe speak to these issues. Kathy Nolan?
Kathy Nolan, planning commissioner. Thank you, Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem Wyrick, council members and staff. And I also wanted to thank our community development director, who actually I felt conveyed our continuous discussion on this topic. But I wanted to say that tonight, I'm actually the liaison for the planning commission, so I happen to be here for that purpose. But I also just wanted to make a comment about this particular topic. And as Kathleen's so stated, we're basically looking for your feedback on what we've done. In other words, are we going in the right direction? And ultimately, of course, we'd like you to agree to our proposal that you'll find in the matrix, and then ultimately, you know, have the ordinance drafted. But I also wanted to point out that we've added something new, and that is the tiny homes. And we'd like to get that permitted as a second, a legal second dwelling unit. And we, you know, depending on how your discussion goes and what you agree on and what you recommend, what we'd like to see is for it to come back to planning commission, and then we would take it and further define amendments, and then, of course, bring it back to you again. So we feel like there's more work for us to do, but we wanted, at this point, your feedback.
Appreciate that.
I also wanted to share that a couple of weeks ago, I happened to be in Detroit. I went to the Congress for New Urbanism Annual Convention, and I happened to attend a creative affordable housing presentation. It was very good. And towards the end of the presentation, you know, they were talking about parking and, you know, materials and the size of the units and all these things that we could do and, you know, to listen to people, what do they want? And then at the end, he said, really, the most affordable, affordable housing is to do something like a mobile unit. And then somebody said tiny house, and you could just kind of hear the drone throughout the room of everybody going, oh, yeah, tiny houses. What are you doing, you know? And so the buzz kind of came up that it's definitely something people are looking at. And there were people there, there were planners, developers, designers, architects from all over the country and other countries that happened to be at this convention. And so, you know, it's something new, but I think it's something that's very doable, and it provides more housing, but it's also very affordable. So I wanted to, thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Diane McCourtney on the second dwelling unit. She had to leave. Sorry about that. Vina, I can't make out the last name very well. Sorry, my mistake. Go ahead.
It's Vina Lustado.
Insada.
Lustado.
Thank you.
Like Tozado, except it's Lustado.
With a D.
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Vina Lustado. I am an Ojai resident as of seven years now. I own a small business called Soul House Design, and I live in the east end of Ojai. As you may recall from the last meeting with the city council, there was a consultation by our consultant, Dan Fitzpatrick, who gave a PowerPoint presentation regarding tiny homes. And we have invited him again today to give a brief comment regarding the tiny homes presentation.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, nice to see you again.
Oh, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, staff, I had the pleasure of giving a presentation on tiny homes and specifically tiny home on wheels to the planning commission several months ago and to the city council several weeks ago. And I'm pleased to see the matrix that is before you today, that major progress has been made on amending or suggesting amendments to the second dwelling unit ordinance. And I would urge you to move forward on that matrix and direct staff to begin drafting the ordinance. I do understand the whole issue of CUPs versus staff review versus by right, and I would urge, take a close look at that. CUPs, when I hear it as a developer, that immediately means time and money. And in the case of, if you want affordable units tomorrow, if you tell a property owner that you've got to step back and spend time and money on that, it just, you know, so I think that's worth a further debate. As the leader, chapter leader of the American Tiny House Association, we're in favor of and support all tiny homes. And remember, any of these second dwelling units we're talking about, 640, you know, square feet or less are all tiny homes. They're backyard cottages, bungalows, you know, whatever you wish to call them. But they all have traits in common, as you recall from my presentation, is, one, the affordability, you know, issue. Two, it provides a diversity of housing stock. Right now, an entry-level home in Ojai is about a half million dollars, and that's a fixer-upper, right? That really doesn't provide opportunities for affordable housing and certainly doesn't support a great, great deal of your workforce. What's nice about second dwelling units and tiny homes and tiny home on wheels is it provides additional housing and diversity with practically no cost of additional services to the taxpayer. You're already paying police and fire and everything else out in those neighborhoods. And as it relates to the affordability aspect, it's one of the few things you can approve to provide affordable units under your housing element that costs zero in terms of subsidy. It's not Section 8, it's not federal money, it's not, as I think joke last time, you're not giving up your firstborn in order to get some affordable, you know, housing units built in your community. In closing, I would urge you to ask your planning commission to put together the definitions and the standards and so forth for permitting tiny home on wheels as permitted second dwelling units. And as it relates to the issue brought up by your planning director, community development director, is we were talking about unit versus space, you know, because, you know, tiny homes on wheels are mobile. And as I said in my presentation, it's one of the, unlike a stick-built one that has to be there permanently, a tiny home can be moved. So you're approving two things. One, the space, and, two, you're approving the unit, you know, the design right, as it meet, you know, standards, it's not an RV, you know, it's actually a tiny home on wheels that meets, you know, standards. So it's important that you're doing both. But if you don't want people rolling units in and out, I think I suggested, and I'll be more than happy to work with the planning commission on it, of putting in your ordinance a requirement that you only can get approval for one unit in a year period of time. In other words, if that person rolls out one month from now, you can't come back to the planning director and say, oh, I want it, I want you to approve this unit.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, try to wind up here.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to be clear to the public as a whole, the tiny homes can be permitted under a different set of code under state law than stick-built houses.
Correct.
And just to make sure everybody understands that.
Stick-built is under the International Residential Code. Mobile homes over 600, over 640, I think it is, square feet is regulated by HUD, and these types of stick-built but on wheels units under 600 square feet are regulated by ANZI, the American National Standards Institute.
And that's, that's been adopted by the state of California, I believe, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
Dan, thank you for your, for your involvement and also your expertise. And as this moves forward, I'm hoping that you and Kathleen create a great relationship because you just have a lot of knowledge and so does she, and I could just see it working to benefit our community.
Ditto. Thank you. Debbie Godfrey?
Thank you, council members. I am speaking to the tiny house. I'd like to advocate for you to move forward on permitting them in whatever streamlined fashions they're describing. I've been a member of this community for 16 years. I've lived in the city for about 11 of that and in the surrounding area the rest of the time. And I could never afford to buy a home here. And right now, I reside here because I have a friend who rents me a room in her home on Park Road, and I've been there for a little over a year. And so when Vina started making tiny homes and describing them, I thought, that's a way I could actually stay in Ojai. So if I, my, once my roommate sells her how she's going through a divorce, that's one way. When he did the ROI on last week, or last month, the presentation where the price point is at 750, it's like, I could afford to do that. And that's a way that I could remain a resident here in this community because without that, even, even this short-term rental thing, even if that's solved, I think I'm still not capable of paying current rent market rates even without that going on. And so tiny house is definitely a movement I think that would help people like myself that are very low income. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Lori Slade?
Hello? Thank you for considering tiny homes. I'm really a fan, although I currently live in Mirror Valley Mobile Home Park with my husband. I have noticed that, I didn't think I'd live in a mobile home, that's where I am, but it's great. And I can walk around there, and it's safe, and I know the neighbors, but I have my own privacy. So I'm also hoping that besides second units, the city might be able to find land where they could allow a tiny home, mobile home park. It's been done in other cities, and people who can't afford a home or don't want to end up as a senior, as like myself, in some big apartment building or something that, wow, I could still have independence and community and afford it. So the other point I would like to make is that even though tiny homes do house families and couples, a lot of people who live in them and love them are singles. And you probably know that in 2013, and I'm sure this number has grown since, that the Census Bureau found that the percentage of one-person households has grown over the past 40 years from 17% to 27%. So that's over a quarter of our nation of people that are living alone. And this number is probably going to increase till the baby boomers like myself are gone anyway. So I think tiny homes are looking forward to really solve the dilemma of single-person households. How can they afford it? So speaking for single friends, I know two who have left Ojai recently because they just couldn't afford it, even the rents anymore. And lastly, on May 14th, I read an article in the Ojai Valley News that was entitled, "Outlook for Affordable Housing in Ojai Not Good." And in speaking about the challenges the city faces in meeting affordable housing requirements from the state, Mayor Paul Blatz was quoted as saying, "No project has come before the council other than the people's self-help. I would hope that somebody does come forward." So here we are. We've come forward for tiny homes.
Thank you. So you would be, you would welcome the opportunity, and I'll, I won't, I'll call it a tiny home village.
Yes.
Rather than a mobile home park. You would welcome the idea of living in a tiny home village?
Well, myself, I'm happy where I am, but if my husband should pass before me, I might sell it and move into a tiny home village. I would certainly, I know so many people who would welcome that. And just all over the country, people are trying to live with less. And just all over the country, people are trying to live with less resources. I mean, the thing about a tiny home village, more people in, in the space, more housing for the same space, lots of people, less resources used and more affordable. So I think it's great.
Well, thank you. And certainly demographically, the average household size in the city of Ojai has been in a downward trend for some time.
Right.
There's no doubt about that as well.
People are trying to simplify.
Well, and also it's, you know, for example, you know, people raise their kids.
Yeah.
They've moved away, and they don't want to move away.
Right.
There's maybe a house with five people in it, you know, 20 years ago, and now there's one or two.
Right. And when you're in that position, like my husband or myself, or you're single, you volunteer a lot, I would just like to say.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. Thank you. Diane Squire?
Yes, I'd like to just go on record as a supporter of tiny homes and also any kind of alternative that affords housing in Ojai. I've been a renter for eight and a half years in Ojai. When I started out, it was at the Ojai Gardens Apartments at the end of North Ventura Street. I was 900 a month for a two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath apartment, double level. Now I pay 13, and new people coming into the complex pay 1875 for the same unit. Now, I don't know what you call affordable, but I know people who are on fixed incomes, limited incomes, close to retiring, who can't afford that. And so we're looking for various options, which don't mean you sell your couch for sleeping space or, you know, your back patio, whatever. The other thing I want to, I just, tiny homes address so many beautiful solutions to housing. The place I'm in right now, the upstairs has no air conditioning. So during the summer, I moved down into the living room, which has an air conditioner. I had to provide, as a renter, my own refrigerator, washer and dryer. In order to be habitable, I have to pay for air conditioning units upstairs and the cost of installation. My landlords will not cover that. And so, you know, there's this, this quality of life issue that moving into something smaller really appeals to me. I will go on record, I'm 64, I just had my birthday, I'm going to have to work till I'm 90. I cannot afford to retire or buy a home, but I could make a home. I could make a tiny home. I'm good with a hammer. I could do this. And it's, it's the excitement and the challenge in saying, this is a way I could own something and I could design it, because I'm a designer, and I could really participate in something fun and wonderful. And so I really look forward to that, and I will also go on record saying I would love a mobile home, tiny home community option. I just, we have a problem in this country, and there are people who can't afford to live in anywhere but the sticks or under a bridge because they're being priced out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have no more speaker cards, but opening up if someone in the audience wishes to address the, the second unit issue and tiny homes, et cetera.
I'm Tara Saylor. I've been a resident on and off for 25 years. I just want to go on record for somebody that's 30 and under. There, you know, growing up here, we didn't have necessarily between the ages of 18 and 30, a very positive environment. And I think there's been incredible work in the last 10 years to create a space, a safe space for us to excel. And I think there's an incredible community now of people that are 30 and under. However, there is no homes for these people. So I want to go on record saying that we'd also like to support a tiny home village. I don't think it needs to be mobile home. And it would also bring on jobs and opportunity as a builder, designer, fabricator, myself. I know I would love to help people and supported this. That's it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else wish to come forward? I see two, and that's all right, you'd be first.
This is going to be short. I'm actually not a resident of Ojai, but I live nearby. I'm building two tiny houses with my two brothers.
Bring the microphone a little closer to you.
Sure.
There you go. And you, did you state your name?
Erin.
Okay.
I, as I mentioned, I'm not a Ojai resident, but I do live nearby, and I heard about this meeting, and I just wanted to thank everyone who's here who's considering tiny homes as an option for people who are looking into affordable housing. And I've talked to quite a few people who are either in the process of building or who are thinking about building. And I thought that it would be a lot of recent college graduates, but I've been surprised by how many different people are interested. People who have children leaving, people who don't want the maintenance of a larger home, people who are struggling to buy their first home. So I just wanted to say, I'm really glad that Ojai has decided to tackle tiny houses head-on.
Thank you.
Yep.
Maybe last but not least?
I'm Jane Spiller, resident of Ojai, 202 Pauline Street. And I wanted to address how the second residential unit ordinance relates to the housing element and what the purpose is. Because in reading it over, it seemed very restrictive and like it would be trying to reduce the opportunities to construct second units. So I wanted to ask you if you could read it over carefully and do what you can to streamline processing, reduce costs, and reduce the time that needs to be spent by our very limited city hall staff in processing these kinds of things. Because as I understand it, the housing element wants to create more housing. And if we want affordability in Ojai, by definition, we need more housing. So in particular, I wanted to address size. And tiny houses are a wonderful movement, which will definitely fill a need that we have. But we also have a need for family-friendly housing. And I think we should consider second units in terms of what can accommodate a family. And the current allowance of 640 square feet is not very realistic. Now, there is something that says, allow a maximum of 850 square feet with a conditional use permit. And as someone mentioned, that means time and money. Why would anyone want to require a CUP for a negligible amount of increased square footage of 850 square feet? Doesn't make sense. And there's another option which says, allow a maximum of 1,200 square feet on lots over two acres. Well, how many of those are there in Ojai? I mean, it really reads as though Ojai is not trying to encourage housing. So I would just ask you to consider possibly requiring that second units meet the city's lot coverage requirements instead of something like a minimum of two acres. And I hope that you will consider how to structure the second unit ordinance to streamline processing, reduce costs for everybody, time for city staff, and so we can get more housing in Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you. If that, or any other, no other comments, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Again, I suspect that with this three of us, we'll express ourselves, maybe provide some direction, but probably not be definitive about it with just the three of us. I have some strong opinions, but I'm going to inhibit myself and see, before I express them, and see if my colleagues wish to discuss this first.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem Wyrick.
Ms. Lera?
I look at this with the goal of, obviously, the affordable housing. I think we are in need of affordable housing here in the city, and this is just a way of getting a different type of affordable housing. That's how I look at second units. And it's also clearly defined under state law that this is, the whole, the main goal is to add affordable housing. So I questioned the CUP even though I was confusing the process because I felt like it was adding time and money. So my first suggestion as an individual council member is to strike that. I appreciate the planning commission's efforts of adding square footage, but in my opinion, I would add, I'm going to be bold and say, go with what state law is in doing the 1,200 square feet. I know, reading the staff reports, interesting how, when it was brought up in 2003, when it was processed, that Mr. Miley and Mr. Whitman wanted to strike that and reduce the square footage. It's, it impressed me that Mr. White, Mr. Miley is, was involved since a while ago.
I think you mean Commissioner Merk?
No.
Miley?
Mr. Miley, he gave a stat, he gave a, a letter in, trying to restrict the second units guidelines.
Okay.
But I disagree with him, and I think we should just go to 1,200 square feet because it adds a different, accommodates a different type of, of family, of constituents that could take advantage of the second unit. I also want to address the tiny homes. I think it's, obviously, it's slam dunk for us to direct the planning commission to start adding the standards and the definitions to what that means. I think that I have no issue with it. I've seen the presentation, I hear the, the support from the community, think it's a, it's a valid option for, for the city of Ojai to pursue. Also, I, I'm not necessarily sure if I agree with the number 10 recommendation on page four dash five, where it says, "All street improvement required by the director in connection with the construction," with that one, and then it goes on further. I'm not, I'm not quite sure if I agree just with that in general. I feel like that might add a constraint to second unit. Somebody that's building a second unit also has to be required to, to improve the driveway. I think, I think there's, I'm not sure if, if we're putting, I get the whole concept that it is good to modify the driveway to accommodate the second unit, but I don't know what the requirements are. I'm just a little afraid that if we leave it that broad, we could add a lot of requirements to the second, to the driveway and kind of, this not encourage the second unit to happen. I don't know if that's happening right now, but when I read that language, it's so broad that I just get a sense that that could be an impediment. An alternative driveway design and materials shall be encouraged. I also, I don't know if that's the best record, alteration to this requirement because it's, it's going to add, in my point of view, a different look to neighborhoods and in our, I think in our code says that we are trying to make it all compatible and making the second unit primary look, be compatible to the primary unit. That's just in my eyes, I don't know if that's an issue with the different council members. Let me see, what else on here? I mean, my main goal is, like, are, some of our speakers that, especially Ms. Spiller, is to streamline these permits and to allow for flexibility and for encouragement, just because it benefits our citizens and it also adds more affordable housing to our senior members.
Thank you. Councilman Haney?
Okay. Councilman Sveral, I wasn't trying to be rude, I was utilizing our packet, and I went through real quickly in the back on all of the addresses that we have in Ojai. And, because I wanted to look at this two-acre thing. We have 93 parcels in the city of Ojai over two acres. We have 3,700 homes. So someone do the math real quick, what percent is 93? So again, I just don't, I don't understand why we have a clause in there on two acres when two-acre parcels are such a minor part of our housing element here in town. So, so again, I don't see the reason to hinder anyone's ability to, to mobilize themselves to provide a second unit house for someone in our community. I just don't, don't see it. 3,700 homes, I think, is what we have in our housing. 1,600 to 1,700 of that is already rental. So think about it this way, just think of every house in the community had the ability to add an additional space to it, whether it's 640 square feet, whether it's 150 square feet, whether it's 1,200 square feet. I mean, we're talking about almost doubling our inventory. It just seems like it's a no-brainer to think about how we can do this as a, as a community. So that would, that's my thoughts on that. And again, I'm sorry, I was scrolling through these papers while you were speaking, but I was listening. And the, the other thing too is, again, anything that's going to impact the ability to create this unit. For instance, Kathleen, don't, on any new construction, aren't we required to meet, was, is it Title 24 and the Unified Building Code? So we already have a standard as to what to build, how to build, and, and we already have zoning as to what are the requirements of these specific areas. It just seems like we need to figure out how to get out of the way and how to really help these people to achieve the success that we'd like this community to have. So that would be my take on it. And so anything that I would look in here that's going to create a restriction, an obstacle, or something or somehow that is going to be detrimental to our ability to build, I just think we need to look at it and remove it. So that's where I stand on this.
Mayor Protem Wyrick, I know, I know you want to speak, but I did have a quick question about that. I, I know this is hard for you, but...
Facilitate. Facilitate.
Just a quick question, because I agree with, with the whole process of trying to streamline when it's appropriate. For the most part, I do think that we should open it up a little bit, just like Councilmember Haney has indicated. But does, does our growth, what is it called, the growth ordinance, does that apply to the second unit homes?
I don't, I don't have my zoning warrants with me, I mean municipal code, but I don't think so, do you? I think it's exempt.
Or is it only?
I think, I think it's specific to the growth management ordinance, I think.
And I believe, just if I could pipe in here, I think, one, there are some carve-outs for second units, and number two, the, the growth unit allowance we have is so underutilized. It's not, it's not a constraint right now.
It's not a constraint.
I would just, it popped into my head as...
Those are both true, and I would add that for the state law-protected second units, which is most of these, that trumps the growth management ordinance, period.
And, and I do want to also say that, I do, I do agree, I'm, I'm open to the planning commission looking at other ways to lift the deed restrictions. I'm not fully convinced, but I, I know under the page 28 of 33 of Attachment A talks about ways that we could make exceptions to deed restrictions. I'm open to that because I think that we do live in a community where, where it is appropriate.
William, you have the floor.
A couple broad comments. One, I, I think everyone needs to understand that the history of the city's current second unit ordinance, if you read the record, the historic record, it came into being when the ci, when the state said, "You will allow these," in an environment where many cities were trying to keep them out. That's when we adopted the second unit ordinance in response to that state law. And if you read the record, it was an attempt to try and do what we needed to do to get statutory compliance and nothing else. The current code was not meant to encourage second units, period. That's factual statement. Did you want to?
Turn off my mic, sorry.
So, so what's happened, and that's many years ago, I think we have come to a different place culturally now. We have adopted... We have adopted a housing element as well that is predicated on the, on the, on the assumption, it's built into our housing element, that we will enhance housing density in the city of Ojai as a means of supporting community and affordability. These are, these are just basic concept, concepts that we need to, I think, accept and where I'm coming from. And so when, um, and, and so I, I am, uh, I, I think you're, you're getting a sense here from the council that, and I'm going to add my voice to that, I have some, um, issues with the direction, the recommendations of planning commission that, that seem to, continue restrictions that are hard to really justify. And in particular, I think interjecting a conditional use permit process into residential properties and residential housing supply is, um, uh, something I will be, uh, flat out against, period. For a couple of reasons. One, the, the concerns of the planning commission are valid, but I don't see that they have to be addressed by a conditional use permit. They can be addressed by other means. Number two, conditional use permits are a transferable property right that goes on forever unless removed by a court. Why would we do that? Why would we? And, and again, I think Ms. Spiller's comment is quite appropriate. Let's say you, uh, you have a right for 640 square feet, but if you want to go to 850, you've got to go through the, all the overhead expense of, of a CUP. I don't see that. I don't see that approach as being consistent with the housing element of our general plan. That's my, my feeling. And so I, um, I, I think the, uh, I would like to suggest first and foremost, I think the direction from this council is, to planning commission is, is, don't go the CUP approach, period. Um, that's my personal opinion. And I, I don't know, you know, obviously, uh, I'm only one voice on this council. Second of all, I, uh, I think Councilman Haney's comment is, is quite appropriate. When you think about tiny homes and what that could mean for this community, in particular if we could get our act together so second units and tiny homes don't turn into vacation rentals, then we can have an impact, a meaningful impact. And many, uh, you know, many lots could accommodate a tiny home in a, in a, in a way our, and frankly, I like the, I, my imagination has been captured by the idea of, of at least considering some of our, um, pieces of city land that are designated for affordable housing projects in our general plan. Let's think about that. You know? For one thing, it's, we're not talking about something that has a, a lot of height or massing, and it's something that's reversible if it doesn't work out because you're on a trailer basically still. And, uh, I think it lends itself perfectly to some, um, some demonstration projects without being too completely long-term committed if things, aspects of it don't work out. I, if, if a lot is big enough, uh, and there's, you know, we have the appropriate issues of compatibility with the neighborhood, what's wrong with allowing a second unit and a tiny home? I don't understand why that would necessarily be ruled out. I don't understand, uh, so for example, I have a fundamental disagreement with the idea of limiting, kicking in a CUP at 850 or asking that there be two acres before you can go to, uh, 1,200 square feet. Personally, I'm prone to the idea of keeping it simple. You have a lot, you have existing zoning rules for lot coverage. On those lots, if you, uh, can stay within those lot coverage standards, why can't you have a, up to a 1,200 like is suggested by state law? Uh, and if those lot coverage standards, you know, I know I'm being, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm going out on a limb here and people will disagree with me, but if the lot's big enough and you're not exceeding those lot coverage standards, what's wrong with a, a second unit and a, and a tiny home? I don't, I don't get it. All right? Why we're so worried about this? In other words, I think that the idea of approaching this in a, in a, in a practical and tractable fashion fits within the challenges of our times and within the character of Ojai, both personally. That's how I feel. We need to be able to accommodate the people that are so important part of our culture that are being driven out now, and that's why I'm so committed to increasing the housing supply and, um, trying to keep, in a, in a, in a way that's consistent with Ojai's character and also, uh, working to keep away, keep the, uh, housing, uh, being taken away by, by short-term rentals. So I just, uh, you know, I, um, bottom line, I, I, I do not accept the approach of case by case that the planning commission is suggesting as being consistent with the housing element of our general plan. That doesn't mean that there shouldn't be rules and regs and, and various kinds of things that protect the character of the city as we pursue this goal of the housing element. And maybe there are circumstances that design review permits could, should be kicked in, which is a very different animal from a conditional use permit and accomplish some of the same ends that are included in this, in thing, but I, I would be, I'd be, uh, again, I think it's important that when we look at things like deed restrictions and, and, and all these matters of, of square footage, that we be, um, we try to keep in mind our goal, as Councilman Haney stated it, in terms of our housing element. Does it, is it consistent with the housing element? And I, I just think that tiny homes are an important component. I hope we get more, I hope I can convince my colleagues to get more aggressive in terms of looking at, uh, maybe the possibility of a tiny home village demonstration project. Uh, and I really think we should, um, look at ways to allow second units and, and, and tiny homes in a way that, you know, doesn't be unduly restrictive and doesn't break the bank. You can't have a escalating soft costs and be consistent with the housing element and be consistent with the goal of affordable housing. So that's how I feel.
Mayor Proton Weyrich? Uh, I think, uh, comments to both Councilmember Haney and, and your, your suggestions, I agree. I think that we should really encourage second unit homes and where there's, uh, added requirements, uh, like the CUP, I, I don't think we, we support. Uh, I don't think that was the intent of the planning commission. I think they're just finding ways to be flexible and all honesty, reading their, their minutes and, and seeing, and at the same time, reading through their minutes, they're trying to figure out what the goal was. And I think this is the first time that they're hearing what the majority, at least of council feels like this, what the amendments or modifications should be. And in saying that, I'm looking at some of their proposals. I think that some of their proposed language, uh, that they're, uh, that they want us to consider does meet our requirements. For example, um, so I want to go, I want to leave the planning commission with things that I agree when they're, when they're talking about modifying the second unit. It's in terms of allowing, it's, it's, uh, under the standard requirement on page four dash three, the second one where it says, "Second unit shall not be permitted in a law addition to..." They actually offered language that would strike "not" to allow others, other, uh, components such as, um, uh, other structures, accessory structures, or guest homes to be in the same lot. So I think that concept, I think we could support the planning commission following that thought process, that mind frame. So there's some good things in there that they suggested, in my opinion, and another one could be under lowering, uh, to seven, 7,500 square feet for the VMU. Um, so it's, it's already allowing some flexibility, so that I do support. I, so there is some good suggestions, recommendations that they have proposed to us in here, so I just don't want them to go feeling that, that we totally disagree with their thought process. We're just adding more clarity to what they're doing. So when it comes back to us, um, they, they see that, they, I think that, uh, they were thinking about this the right way.
Thank you.
Um, I think, well, we can bring this, um, back together by just simplifying some direction to Kathleen, and that would be to take this back and, and this is a good body of work and it's-
Great start, yeah.
Um, and, and then just go back and think about what we've said tonight, and that's, um, think about affordability, think about increasing housing stock, um, remove impediments for development, um, look at lot size and figure out there might be, you know, there might be three specific areas that you could actually, um, put some square footage requirements on. Um, and what I'm saying that is you might be able to take a two acre parcel or larger and put that into a DR requirement, and then maybe take a two acre and something under and create something for that environment and then take. So, um, I think there's ways that those, that those three issues could be addressed. Um, and then obviously, tiny houses are going to be their own element, but they need to be flushed out, they need to be brought back. Um, I think it's pretty simple because I think the start here is wonderful, and I just think they have to review it based on the comments that we've had tonight from the community as well as ourselves and come back with a second shot.
Please.
Okay, so one of the issues that we had, um, when discussing, I'd just like to get some feedback on it, is, you know, once you go, so there's a couple of different concepts. One is affordable with quotes on it and affordable the way the state mandates, you know, extremely low, very low, low, moderate, right?
Right. They're different animals sometimes.
Different animals. And the idea of a smaller sized house being sort of, um, if you would have it, affordable by design. And so the issue comes up at 1,200 square feet. There are lots of them. We've all seen them either through the sanitary district photos or whatever, where they're really truly not affordable units. They're renting for a lot. So what, what, um, direction do you have for staff that would help us increase the size but has no restrictions on really creating it truly affordable? And that's, I think, the rub that we're really struggling with because with a CUP, there's always the, there was, there's always the opportunity to tell somebody, if you're going all the way up to 1,200 square feet, you have to deed restrict it. You know, it allows you to do different things, right? So I'm just not so sure that by making the unit bigger, you're really meeting the goal of affordable if you don't have any, because obviously, they're not going to be indentured. It's not going to meet your arena because it's not an indentured. It's going to go as moderate, right? And I think that's where we need some direction.
Well, may I jump in? I think, um, the challenge is to not, in an attempt to pursue a narrow goal, defeat the more general goal.
Right, I understand.
Okay? So the general goal is to increase the housing supply. So if we try to, you know, I, I understand what you're saying, but you can pursue the narrow goal of saying, "Well, we want to make sure that this is, this second unit is affordable," and we put so many extra soft costs on that thing with, with a CUP process that we defeat the goal. And, and so I'm not sure how to answer the question. Um, one interesting thing would be if you, if you went a lot coverage approach-
Right.
-that limits the size of what you can add.
For many, right.
Yeah. And so, yeah, if you have enough, frankly, if you have enough smaller lots, you're going to be, um, limiting the size of that second unit that, that could be put in there by the lot coverage requirements.
Correct.
It'd be interesting to see that statistic, in other words. You know, how many lots actually could, under existing lot coverage, require, uh, lot coverage standards accommodate a 1,200 and how many in fact could not?
Well, give me five minutes and I'll look it up for you.
Yeah, yeah, get it. You got that. So you see what I'm trying to say is there's-
Oh, I see you, totally.
You know, that, that's part of analyzing what to do going forward is, is how much, you know, making it simple, uh, in effect, provides the opportunity for the kind of supply that you're talking about. And I don't know the answer to the question. Am I making myself clear?
You are. I just, you know, my only, my only concern when they ask me questions often is they say, you know, if, if by allowing 1,200 square feet and something that's, you know, upscale and, and not providing affordable housing, you then have taken that opportunity that it will ever, that piece of property will ever provide affordable housing. And that's always the push in the pool.
I understand that, but I'm thinking of a, of a family with, you know, several kids-
Right.
-that we want in this community.
No, I totally agree.
And, uh, you know, they're going to, they're going to need a 1,200 square foot second unit. Uh, and, and I, and the other option there is if you're talking about, uh, you know, we, we could have some permissive elements as well. That's where we get to the tiny homes option where you, maybe there's a 1,200 square foot second unit, but you can also put a tiny home back there.
Are you, are you, I mean, to considering-
Excuse me.
-considering the option that if you allowed for a second tiny home, that this, that the third unit on the property-
Yes.
-has to be indentured?
I, I, I think that's something to discuss, yes.
You know, deed restricted for affordable.
Oh, I'm not necessarily necessarily about deed restriction.
We have to be very careful about doing that. The Costa Hawkins Act prohibits this, the city from imposing rules regarding the initial rental price of a rental unit-
I wasn't suggesting-
-with certain, that was, that, that's what you were suggesting, and that we don't have that power. With certain exceptions, exceptions being city subsidized, density bonus, those, that area.
That's what he's talking about. He's talking about dens, well, that's what I thought he was talking about.
That's a possibility.
I thought he was talking about adding a third unit on a piece of property.
Granting a third unit above the otherwise allowable density.
Correct.
That you could do, yeah.
In other words, if we could add, give a density bonus, uh, option, uh, under the, under a covenant of, of a certain band of allowable rent, for example.
I'm just asking if there's, if there's any, um, direction to explore that.
Right.
Okay.
I think we should explore it.
Okay.
Mayor Proton Weyrich, I do have a follow-up question to Kathleen about affordability of it. So you're discussing in planning commission level that a 1,200 square second unit, if it's, if it's, it could be not defined as affordable housing. Under what require, under what criteria are you not defining affordable housing?
I think the idea just, I don't think there was any, it was, and they explored the issue that, you know, a lot of the homes here in Ojai are relatively small, and these homes that they're talking about that go for half a million, they're not much bigger than 1,200 square feet. You know, lots of them are 13. So the issue of whether a second unit then becomes just generally unaffordable too by, by just design, the fact it's 1,200 square feet, you know? And so the idea that they had was keeping it, I mean, regardless of whether it's 640 or 850 or some arbitrary number, at what point does it get to the point that it's truly not affordable and similar to what is already out there to half a million?
I, I, I would just respond to that as, as, um, because I asked this question a long time ago, and everyone in this room is going to have a different answer. What's affordable?
Right.
So I don't think that we can put anything based on affordability per se. What we're going to say is, um, a 500 square foot unit is probably going to rent at one number, and a 1,200 square foot unit's going to rent at, at another number, um, along with the other amenities that might come with those units. So, um, I just think affordable, again, affordability, we're all going to have a different term for it. And also the, obviously, the cost of constructing and things of that nature are going to be passed on, so that's going to play into that affordability. There's just too many issues to, to get caught up in that term. I think the most important thing is just providing units and letting the, the community will dictate. Obviously, the more units that we have, the price should come down. That's the, the supply and demand theory, hopefully, or-
And I, and I'll remind everyone of the, what is in our program in our housing element is remove unnecessary impediments to second unit supply.
Great.
The only other question I would, I would like to have some answers on the issue of Septics versus, um, city sewer. I mean, it's one of the issues that was kind of surprised to me that there are still people pursuing second units on Septics and whether or not, the planning commission was very specific about you having to be- specific about you having to be connected to the sewer system, regardless of whether it's commonly metered or separately metered. But, you know, there's, that does, if you put that on there, then that, then there's one goal, which is to move everybody off these septics, which is environmentally and friendly, to some people's way of thinking, which is another goal, or it is certainly going to be an impediment if you put that in there.
Yeah, that's an interesting question, of people, I think, might be surprised how many homes in Ojai are still on septic.
Correct, so I just wanted to give some direction on that, because, I mean, that's definitely one of those double edged swords that cuts both ways. It's an impediment, but it's really, I mean, it's like everything else in the city of Ojai, the general plan has lots of policies in them, and sometimes they are not, they conflict when you're trying, when you're looking at it singularly.
Councilman Hanny.
I, I just have a simple response to that, that, you know, the, the state regulations regarding sanitation issues are constantly changing. So I think right now, if a lot has a septic, we're going to allow someone to tie into that system. And if a lot has a sewer system, we're going to require that that person, or that individual, tie into that type of system. Again, I don't think I'd put any type of restraints at this point in time, because down the road, if someone is required by law to remove their septic system, let's say in the Arbolata, and tie into a sewage system, then automatically that transition is going to take place. They're going to have to remove that second unit from a septic system, and then put it into a sanitation system. So I don't think that, you know, to me, that's not a question, or a concern, is, if that's existing, then we allow what's existing, and as it's modified, we modify.
Yeah, I, I would say the same thing, if, if there's a sewer available on the property, or a sewer connection to the property available, then they should connect to the sewer. But if it's not
Do you have a distance, I mean, within so many feet of a property, or do you, do you just want to just
If a lateral's available.
Well, more importantly, I think, is a question of, when a septic system is designed, it's designed for a certain load of square footage.
But we've, we've seen them actually been modified to accommodate a second unit, so they get bigger, and the leach lines get bigger.
So that's what I would say, is, if that's part of the requirement of adding 800, an 800 square foot dwelling, is that that individual would have to go back and increase the size of their septic system. Again, that's just part of the, of what's existing. That's how I would look at it.
Councilman Laura.
I agree.
Kathleen, any other questions?
No, I just, you know, those are kind of the ones that I see as the big ones, and we, you know, like I said, I didn't know the issue with septics until recently.
It is, it's coming. I mean, we have large, we have neighborhoods in our city, and the clock's ticking, at some point, environmental standards will catch up with the situation. I don't know when, but it's coming.
Okay.
I, I just have one last thing, could you kind of, can you speak back to us
Oh, sure.
What you felt, let's say, maybe the five most important concerns are?
So remove, give direction to the planning commission that you don't want to see a tiered approach with a CUP, you want it all by right, and that that by right can be explored in different areas via, you know, either
May I correct that? I don't, I think the direction is no CUP, not, there are other ways of having conditions without going all the way to right.
Yeah, I was going, I was, I was still going on that. You said to look at the zone, or the size, or different, different ways of achieving the same goal, whatever they were trying to achieve by that. You want them to look into tiny homes, and tiny home standards, and put a lot more emphasis on that. I think you're talking about tiny home communities, not something for the second unit, that's a completely different issue.
Different issue.
You are okay with septics or sewer on four second units? You would like to see issues, or at least Severo, Councilmember Laura spoke about the restrictions and the deed restrictions, that's the only, oh my god, that's always been a sensitive issue in the community. We have provided a waiver, and a process for waivers for hardships, and so, I see, he said maybe something more than that, I'm not sure really, really what that would be.
I, I view that as an unnecessary impediment, assuming we can enforce our second, short-term rental thing. I, I don't see the need.
Well, I think the, the waiver, I don't see the need to have annual reporting, and I don't see the need for any of those issues, I think
But it's recorded at the county.
On your deed, right.
And, and that's, I'm just, you know, I have my doubts.
Okay. So what is the clear direction on that, then? Do you want them to remove the
Councilman Hanny.
The deed restriction?
Yeah, I would say remove it.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say remove it.
We're talking about the deed restriction where you would have, so there's two questions then. One would be, do you still want one unit to be owner occupied? Because that is how majority of the communities in California that we've seen, that we've explored, have that. If you want to remove it, one has to be property owner occupied, then it's going to function in a different way than it does. I mean, that, that real direct management is, is kind of the issue that most people want. If you want it to still remain, one unit to be property owner occupied, but you want to remove the deed restriction, that then is the warning to someone who buys the property. That was, that's, that's the two questions there.
I guess my, my direction was to explore those options and see, I'm not fully convinced with removing deed restrictions.
Okay.
But I, I would like to see what they come up with, and under the state law that they were operating, they stay on, I think it was on page 28 of 33 of attachment A, that there are different ways of, of allowing exceptions for that deed restriction.
They were, they feel that there's, that they, they were in the same situation, that, you know, 90% or whatever the fraction, or the percentage would be, most people should, most places should be owner occupied with a deed restriction, but if it was a hardship for you, it would be removing the deed restriction and removing the requirement to be owner occupied, if you were able to demonstrate that the person was elderly, and, and they needed that money for income, you know, whatever, however you wanted them to flush that out.
Or they have to move into, they want to
Correct.
They want to allow a relative to live there, and they have to move into an assisted care center.
They wanted to make it an exception for that, okay?
I, I, I think you're getting a sense from the council that we're not of, we're not hard one way or another right now.
Okay, sounds good. And then, generally speaking, you'd like them to see going all the way up to 1,200 square feet for, for most, one way or another. And then also to explore whether or not there's a way to have a third unit. Or you said based on density, I think is what you said.
It's on lot coverage, to allow a third, especially a third with, in, as a tiny home.
Well, so, units, as he was
If the lot coverage is, is okay.
So the lot coverage doesn't cover density, you know, those are two different things.
I understand.
So, okay, so the density, they would have to have a lot bigger lot to have density, because the second unit
I think you need to take a look at that, because again, the housing element is very clear, the way we're achieving the goals of the housing element are to allow greater housing density.
In other words, if I understood the council, the idea, the direction is to look at allowing a third unit regardless of the density, if the lot coverage is met.
Right.
That's how I understood your direction.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, and before, I mean, I don't want to get into this, but before, when we had talked about this earlier, you had, had the matrix from the planning commission said they couldn't do that. The law doesn't allow them.
To trump the density?
Right, that the, the exception to the density for the state government code is for one unit, that's how I presented it, that was
The by right exception is for one unit, the council can trump that.
Okay, well
If they amend the code to do so, because the density is built into the code, the council can amend the code to change the density requirements.
Okay, but that's fine, but that's fine.
And we could do it in terms of, say, a density bonus mechanism.
If it's structured as a density bonus
No, I don't have a problem with you, with you, if he's going that route of changing the density, because then you are consistent with the density. I thought it was something else that you were just saying there.
But they can build an exception.
Okay.
The council can, can amend the zoning code, and recall, this is all built into the zoning code.
We would like you to look at that.
That's fine.
We'd like you to look at that.
Okay, that's, that's good. Yeah, all right, so, I just don't want to be, I don't want to be confusing to the planning commission of how we've already presented it to them, so I'm, I'm fine. I think I have that.
Thank you.
That's, did I miss anything?
My last, my last concern is the tiny house community, is what separates it from a
RV.
An RV community. I just like that information. I'm sure you're going to have to look that up anyway, to talk, to
No.
To research that, that environment.
And I'm sure Dan has an answer for you, if you talk to him on the phone.
Well, the, the people at HCD have answers to, they've already reached out through us
Yeah, there's different code sections, state law
Great.
Sounds good, all right.
Appreciate the, the way you've presented the discussion.
Oh, good, thanks.
It facilitated our thinking about it.
Well, I appreciate the back and forth, I like that, I, I think it helps me get back to my, my commissions and boards a little bit easier, so I really appreciate you taking the time.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathleen.
All right, with that, we will move on to the next agenda item. I appreciate everyone's patience and willingness to participate on a very important issue. Thank you.
Good job.
All right, next item is number six.
Number five.
The Libby Bowl Use Fee Waiver Request Evaluation Criteria, and, huh?
Number five.
Number five, excuse me.
Okay.
It's getting late in the night, I need a, I need probably a candy bar or something. Anyway, Libby Bowl Use Fee Waiver Request Evaluation Criteria, number five, discussion item, establish criteria to use when evaluating requests for waiving fees for use of the Libby Bowl, Mr. McLaren.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Wyrick. Ms. Young will be
She just pulled in here, Amber's right there.
Yes, Ms. Young will be presenting the staff report this evening. Ms. Young, the floor is yours.
Good evening, city council members, thank you very much for having me. So, the, at the January, pardon me, so the, at the January 12 city council meeting, the council approved the current Libby Bowl fees and the policies and procedures, and at that time, there was also an approved motion to provide a vehicle for nonprofits to come forward with a request for a fee, partial or full fee waiver, and a waiver of any particular portion of the criteria that were particular onus, onerous to their, to their event. So, and then at a later meeting, it was motioned and passed to have the, excuse me, to have staff bring forward criteria on which to base the cri, to base the fee waiver approval or denial. So in that vein, we, staff looked at different methodologies and, and systems that have already been in place and established, and it appeared that the waiver of Libby Bowl fees is similar to an in-kind donation to any particular nonprofit or community event, and the city already has a vehicle for giving donations, or grants, or however, any kind of funding to nonprofit cultural events that are happening in the valley in the form of the arts grants. And so, we identified a couple, we identified a couple of criteria that seemed the most appropriately applicable, that are listed in your staff report under the discussion section, and then also included the entire kind of guidelines that are already used for the arts grant application, to kind of open up the conversation and get you guys started.
I like the way you characterize this. I appreciate that. It's a nice, it's a, it's a nice conceptual, I appreciate it. I, just one comment, just a question for you. When you say nonprofit, that doesn't mean necessarily nonprofit in the eyes of IRS, it means non-profit as we want to define it?
Currently, the Libby Bowl criteria, the Libby Bowl policy and procedures does require the state of California documentation establishing them as a not-for-profit organization. It doesn't designate 501(c)(3) versus 501(c)(4), or any of the others, so long as it's a 501.
So it designates state of California-defined nonprofit. Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
No, I'd like to thank Amber for doing a great job on this, too. I like the fact that you didn't reinvent the will, the will's already there, running rather smoothly, so I just, I, I enjoy the presentation, good job.
Yeah, I appreciate the way you turned the wheel rather than invented. Thank you. Councilman Laura?
No, I don't have any questions for Ms. Young at this point.
I, I'm fine with the staff recommendations.
Yeah, sure.
There was one thing
I just, well, I'm just, I'm giving everybody an opportunity to comment.
If I may, there was one thing that, as I was reviewing the art grant application a little bit more thoroughly, that this, that council may want to include adding, am I allowed if it's included in the packet? And that the grant recipients are required to provide written notice upon the completion of their event to the body that grants the funds, and in addition to that, they are required to use the city's seal on all of their marketing materials, and council may want to consider adding that to the, to the criteria and to the requirements for receiving a waiver.
I think that's, everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, that's why I'm fine with that.
Well, I, I, I was the one that actually requested to bring this up, because I was worried that we were getting requests to do fee waivers, but we didn't have a structured framework to really evaluate the projects. And if I have to remember correctly, as Ms. Young stated, that this process was only going to be implemented for this year. And I worry that, right now, that these standards, even though I, I appreciate staff ability to look at some other program where we give grants, I worry that for this year, are we really making it easier for nonprofits or other organizations to come in and ask for a free waiver? That only was to be implemented for this year. I, I look at the, the organizational or individual strength, the roles of the community, including financial health and the ability to raise fines as needed, I mean, or even put the, the seal, are we creating a policy that is for the future, or is just for this year? And that's my question to council, I want to get clarity, because I'll, I'll, I would approach this matter in a different way if we're doing a policy for, for future years, or is it just going to apply to this year? And that's, that's a question I have for my fellow council members, and this is why I feel so, just, I feel kind of in a weird position, asking people to come in for a fee waiver, just for this year, but we have criteria that is, is, is more set for, how could I say? It's more rigid criteria, in my opinion, than just what we were, we wanted, intention of the motion to, to allow.
Well, my, my, my understanding is if we adopted, well, actually, I don't know if this is for adoption tonight or not, it is a recommendation.
Yeah, the council could adopt this tonight.
And if we did, it would be, this would be the policy until we changed it. It would not be limited to this year, this would be the policy until we changed it. That's my understanding, I stand to be corrected. So it would be
Yes.
Beyond this year, unless we took action down the road.
Okay, well, I just
My understanding.
I just want to make sure, because I, I reviewed the tape, and we were, we wanted to do it for this year.
Right.
So that's, that's why I was so conflicted in myself, was, are we adding criteria for a policy in the future, which I'm okay with, with going to the arts grants guidelines and implementing, or are we doing it for this year, which I think is pretty onerous for somebody new to come in and be able to use the Libby Bowl just for this year? And, and that's where
What would you, what would you prefer?
I mean, I, I'm just, and, and another part of me is, is conflicted, too, because we don't really know the direction of the bowl, in, in my eyes. I don't know, we, we've said so many things that are up in the air, including the putting in a RFP, that I'm not clear if we're really going to go that route or not, and, and is this going to just add a different element to it? I, I just feel conflicted, I don't know how the Sterling contract is going to be, I haven't seen the contract, I can't say I'm against or for it until I see it. I, I feel like we're, if we're really staying true to this year alone, that we would add easier, and, and I don't know, I, and another question that I have is also, is the bowl booked? So is it even appropriate, is, like, I, I don't know where we're at in scheduling, are people, is, is the calendar full for this year, et cetera? I, I don't know any of that information.
Councilman Hanny?
Let me chime in here, so the, so, Councilman Severo, you asked, you asked for that if someone comes to council for a fee waiver, that there is some criteria that we base our decision on. And that has nothing to do with how many events are going to be held, or things of that nature. So I, you might be confusing those two issues, but the most important thing was, you wanted criteria, and I think that's what Mrs. Young provided. The other thing that it does, it still allows for a quality discussion and debate over waiving that fee or not. And then, so for me, whether it's four months, six months, or in perpetuity until we change it, I think it, I think the most important thing is now someone who is going to come before us and is going to request a waiver, has some information that they need to provide to help substantiate their request. And that's what this provides. We still have the discussion, and we still have the latitude of saying yea or nay, just because they meet these, you know, seven items. So, that's where I'm at on this. It gives criteria. And for instance, help me out with the Pops Festival, Steve?
The Scott Weiss.
Scott Weiss. So, we gave Scott a waiver, but we put a condition on it. Well, Scott contacted it this week, I think I emailed you guys on a response, but Scott couldn't meet the criteria. So, Scott backed out. So, now those dates now become an open date, now we can fill them with whoever we need to. But, by us having the discussion and him coming in, and actually, if you look at everything in this criteria, he met it. And we still had a quality discussion, and we still made a, I felt, a good choice.
Well, I feel in his, I feel we added a lot more conditions than what this required. In his, in his fee waiver, I think we made it pretty hard for him to meet, in my opinion. This is, this, this adds a little bit more structure, I agree. But, and that's what I was afraid of, if we were to get more requests for fee waivers, if we didn't focus on, on, on clear criteria. And I felt like with him, we added a lot more conditions.
Well, actually, it worked out to his benefit and our benefit because he couldn't meet, whether, whether he had the condition of meeting a date or not, he couldn't meet the requirements of putting that production on. He couldn't get funding. And what we're going to do is use Scott, we're going to bring him back to our Libby Committee, to the Arts and Libby Bowl and Arts Festival Committee. And we're going to have him talk to us regarding that. What were his successes in it, what were his failures in it? That's going to help us to encourage, which is what that committee was, was to put together for, is to encourage other citizens to bring, to come forward to use the bowl. So, I think the criteria meets your request of having something, and it still opens it up for us to have a quality discussion and a debate as to the pros and cons, and do we, or do we not want to do that?
No, and I, and like I said, I will change my thought process depending on the goal of this council, on where it wants to take this. So, if it's for future policy other than this year, I think it's, it's a great start. But if it's just provided for this year, as when I went back to review the tape, which is specific for this calendar year, then I would change my thought process. But if, if I'm hearing that this is going to go on until we decide how the bowl is going to operate, then I think this is a good staff report.
Well, I think that, I think that's the way this is structured, just what you just stated.
Right.
Plus, criteria is not a checklist, it's not a set of requirements. It's a way of organizing the information that the applicant is, is providing to this council for making a decision. So, it's not, it's not a set of requirements. It's a criteria, a way of organizing, getting the information package before us in a structured way. So, that's why I think it's a good idea to go with, with this and see how it works.
I, I remember the first fee waiver that we had when I was on Recreation and Parks Commission, and it was for the use of Libby Bowl for the veterans. Well, they didn't have any of the criteria in this, they didn't have a business plan, they didn't have anything. What they needed was to use the facility, and we recognized that they didn't have the funding to pay for it. So, that was a real simple fee waiver for us. Whereas Scott Weiss's was a little more complex, and even the Film Festival was a little more complex. So, I think this is a great start, and I'd like to see if we can implement it.
I'll entertain a, if there's any more discussion.
No, there's no more discussion.
We can entertain a motion on this, you know?
Well, they now move to establish criteria to use this evaluating request for waiving fees for the use of Libby Bowl specified under the staff recommendations.
Agreed.
Okay.
I second.
Roll call, if there's no discussion?
Nope.
All right.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Good job.
All right, we now will move to, thank you Amber so much. Now, we move to item number six, which is the authorization to amend animal services agreement between the County of Ventura and the City of Ojai. I am watching the time, Mr. McClary.
As am I and the city attorney, so, thank you Mayor Protem. The recommendation is to determine the level of service requests to be made to the County of Ventura for animal control services for the coming fiscal year, July 1st through June 30th. Also recommending authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to the animal services agreement between the County of Ventura and the City of Ojai for the period of July 1st, 2016 through June, that should be 30th, 2017, typo's in my staff report. Also provide feedback to the County of Ventura on whether the city supports the concept of a no-kill shelter. In 2015, the city entered into a new agreement with the county for animal control services. Before that, the, there had been an existing agreement that had been in effect for many, many years. However, getting into the first year of that agreement, the county did run into some issues, particularly when one of the cities, Oxnard, greatly reduced the number of animals that they were sending to the shelter, and that really affected the way that they were allocating their costs to the member cities. So, as a result, the county has worked, been working with the, with the contract cities that it represents to come up with an amendment to an agreement to change how it's allocating the services to the various cities it serves, and specifically how the cities are charged for the animals that are remitted to the shelter. Several of the cities which contracted with the county for the services are seeing relatively large increases under the new cost formula. However, for Ojai, it really hasn't changed very much. Part of that is simply because we don't have huge numbers there. For fiscal year 1516, we did have 58,000 budgeted for animal control services, and it's projecting out that we're going to spend about 55,000 this year. The amendment, the amendment for, or the projected budget going forward for 1617 from the county is that the county expects our total cost for the city not to exceed $60,066. A lot of that is offset by licensing revenue, which comes into the city. So, county staff is projecting the total net cost of the city to be just under $42,000 for the coming fiscal year. We're recommending that we hold the expense line at 58,000 in the budget, as where there's no guarantee of the, of that revenue coming in. I think it's certainly safe that we could bank on a certain amount of that. And I have a little caveat to that, that I'm going to add on a little bit later. So, again, we, we've held the line item in the budget as recommended for 1617 because we, we think we'd be very safe with that. The other question for council is the number of field service hours. Incidentally, the attachment in here with the request for last fiscal year is incorrect. It said 520 hours per week. The amount that the city actually requested and is receiving is 520 hours per year. The city could increase its field service hours. I know there's a couple of council members have expressed desire to consider that going forward. It's fairly simple, the hourly billing rate is about $52 per hour. Just as a, an example, if the council wanted to increase, say, the field service hours by about 10%, be another 52 hours per year, that would only cost you a little over $2,700. If the council wanted to make some addition in that magnitude, I would say that we could still work that within the existing line item, because again, we are anticipating getting revenue coming back from fees and licenses that goes back, directly back to the city. So, that is an option to consider. The other thing that we're asking here is, the county, the county is asking that each city provide some feedback on whether they support the concept of a no-kill shelter. County switched to a no-kill shelter in 2012, and obviously, they are treating those animals on-site as opposed to euthanizing. It does have the potential to increase their operational costs. Right now, the county has said that the only increase that they've seen is veterinary care, and they're also recently purchased some new lab equipment. They weren't able to give any specific dollar numbers on that, so I realize it's a little difficult for council to be able to weigh in on that in terms of what the fiscal impact has, would be. However, again, county is asking if the city council could weigh in and give some type of opinion back to them on whether it prefers that we be part of a no-kill shelter system. That, if you happen to answer any questions.
Yeah, we do have, we do have public comment on this, so, are there questions of staff?
No, that's your turn.
All right. We have at least one card, and there may be others who want to speak to this. Simone Patterson? Thank you for being so patient, Simone.
Yes, Mayor Protem and council members, I thank you for giving consideration to this topic. I do live in the unincorporated area of Ojai, but I do also feel that I am a citizen of this fine community. This, excuse me, this week, Oregon State Supreme Court declared that dogs are sentient beings. Under this ruling, they are no longer treated as objects, like this podium or a chair. And anyone, it shouldn't come as a surprise to anyone who has ever known the love of an animal. Yet every year, the US kills up to 4 million animals in their shelters, and I use the word "kill" not "euthanize" because it's a euphemism. We kill them. And these are frequently young and healthy animals, whose life potential is snatched away from them. And why? And it's because they are inconvenient to humans. Doing the right thing takes effort and even expense. I go to a lot of trouble at home to conserve and recycle. I do not do it because it's easy, I do it because it's the right thing. And I think no-kill is the right thing. The No Kill Advocacy Center has a fully integrated program available to people online. I've made a copy of some of the salient points in their online information, which I would like to provide to the council. I only ask the city council to continue Ojai's longstanding tradition of compassion for animals and support the county's no-kill policy.
Thank you. Are there other comments on this?
Good evening, I'm Dale Hanson, and I do live in the city. Certainly, I hope that the council will support the no-kill shelter that we have in Camaria. I did receive an email from Tara Dilla in my, in response to the one that I sent to her, and what she pointed out to me is while there is an expense to running a no-kill shelter, the main expense or increase that we have is really not the no-kill, it was for other rising costs. And there was some, as you mentioned, regarding the laboratory and some things that they did buy. But, I also contacted some other people, and namely, got a communication from Jean-Marie Webster, whom some of you may know, and she is one of the founders of Spark, the Santa Paula Animal Rescue Center. And one of the things she said, and I'm not going to read her whole comment, but she commented on the importance of cities really weighing in on the importance of spaying and neutering of our animals. And while we have the Humane Society and Mercy Crusade and Span, all of these offer low cost or no cost spaying and neutering, I think it would be good for the city to really pitch that as much as possible, and animal advocates such as myself and Simone and others do. But one of the things that she said was, life should not have a price tag on it, and I so agree with that. And I think that it's important for the city of Ojai to support the concept of a no-kill shelter. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll bring it back to council for discussion and our motion.
I, I have no questions for staff. I agree that we should provide feedback to the County of Ventura that supports a concept of no-kill shelter. But, other than that, I'll just say I'm in support of that concept, and I'm ready to make a motion if there's no further comments.
I just have a quick comment. Steve, on the, on the hours, the 520 that we're allocating a year, is there, I know one of the issues that we have is the policing of Shelf Road.
Correct.
It's one of our big issues. Is there any way of contacting animal control and asking that, instead of requesting additional hours, that we ask that they, that they prioritize Shelf Road as an area that we'd like to see more policing on?
Yes, we can, and we've actually already had some conversations with them to ask them to try to focus some of their efforts there.
And then the second thing, you know, I sat on the, on the, the animal control board for the county last year as the liaison, and this no-kill issue of animals is probably one of the most important things that we have as a community, and I mean, community as county. The fact that we should all be looking to do this. And right now, there's a couple, there's a couple cities that are still doing euthanizing, but we should all be heading towards providing a safe habitat and an opportunity for an animal to be adopted. And if you go to the Camaria Center, they had donations last year, I think of 50 or $60,000, and that's how they brought in more kennels, and they brought in synthetic grass and some play areas. But, just go there and listen to a bunch of animals howl, and your heart's broken. So, I would support this 100%. And I think the cost increase is minimal, it's a couple thousand dollars a year from what we're paying, what we're budgeting now and what we're budgeting down the road. So, I don't have any other comments.
I fully agree, and I'll entertain a motion.
Authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the animal service agreement between the County of Ventura and the City of Ojai for the period of July 1st, 2016, and June, was that 2017?
Should be June 30th, 2017, correct.
June 30th, 2017. And provide feedback to the County of Ventura that the City of Ojai supports a concept of no-kill shelter. Should I also, in that motion, specifically state that we will keep the same level of services?
Yes.
As previous years? Then I will, now we'll add that to the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call, if there's no discussion?
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes. All right, I'm looking at the time. On, we, we definitely have to do redevelopment agency, we have to do budget approval.
And the, and the resolutions for the election.
The election. And so, I, I hope that even though it's a fairly long staff report, we can do item seven quickly. I assume, is there any, I'm going to ask you to facilitate if there's no real issues in this, if this is pretty standard stuff, so state.
Very standard, with the only exception, just to note that this would be the first year that we're putting the directly elected mayor on as a two-year term.
But other than that, this is pretty much a formality, correct?
Correct, right. Standard request to the county for the election services. Yes, sir.
I, I say I need to see if there's any comment from, from the public, seeing no one come forward. I'll go out on a limb here and entertain a motion.
So, I'll make the motion. Are we talking, are we, the City of Ojai Resolution Number 16 dash nothing? Is there a number associated with that?
There is, it is going to be, hang on. 16 dash 44.
So, the City of Ojai Resolution Number 16 dash 44. A resolution of the.
There's two resolutions.
I'm sorry?
There's two resolutions, yes.
Okay, do we want to do them both? I thought we did them separate.
Let's do them both.
It would be 1644 and 1645 respectively.
Okay.
Okay. So, 1644 and 1645. The resolution of the city council of the City of Ojai, California, adopting a policy for candidate statements, printed in voters' information pamphlets, is the first one, and the second one is.
Establishing the regulations for the candidate statements.
Here we go. Is it that one, too? Adopting, resolution, adopting a resolution establishing regulations for candidate statements submitted to the voters of the Ojai General Municipal Election to be held on Tuesday, November 8th, 2016. And direct staff to prepare appropriate documents to submit to the County of Ventura.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All right, I'll ask for roll.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes. All right, I think the next thing would be then to, we need to get, I think we need to go ahead and get the redevelopment agency out of the way.
That should be quick.
Huh?
I would expect that to be quick.
Okay, so let's get that done quickly. I'll adjourn the regular meeting of the city council and convene a meeting of the Ojai Development Successor Agency, and entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes. And now, we, let me ask about parliamentary question. We are at the budget item, we are in need of doing a closed session on the, with respect to the budget item. If we adjourn to the closed. If we adjourn to the closed session, do we run into a 10:30 problem? Or should we formally begin the discussion of item number two, and adjourn for a closed session, then come back and continue the discussion?
I recommend the latter. Open the item before 10:30, then adjourn to closed session, then reopen the item. And keep in mind that when you reopen, you'll have to reopen the public hearing. You'll have to open that public hearing, pardon me.
Right. Okay, so make sure I'm doing this correctly, Mr. Summers. We're going to open up the public hearing on item number two. City of Ojai Budget, Resolutions Amending the 2015-16 Budget, Adopting the Proposed Budget for 2016-17, and Salary Schedule for 2016-17 and Related Matters. First thing would be to open the public hearing.
Well, you would necessarily have to open the public hearing, you could just open the item.
Yeah, but if people wanted to comment on this, they're going to have to wait until we come back from closed session.
That's a choice, do you want to take comment now or-
We've got a few minutes here, and see if there's any comments-
You can certainly take comment now, yeah.
So I'm going to see if there's any comments from the public, so you don't have to wait for us on the budget. Because I don't know how long we're going to be in closed session.
And there's only a few minutes of the public, so yeah, makes sense to-
I just wanted to make sure everyone had an opportunity. So what we're going to do now is to-
Mayor Protem.
Go ahead.
I do have a, I've been struggling with this since we started, because I wasn't expecting this big of a Exhibit A and Exhibit C packet. And I have put a lot of time reviewing the current budget request, and I have specific questions in regard to that one. But looking at this, I would feel unprepared to really amend or approve the budget. And I know I'm throwing a wrench right now, last minute.
Well, if I could comment on that.
Yes, and I'll finish my thought process on that. On top of that, I feel like we've not allowed the public to look at these modifications and adjustments since it was last minute. So I do propose to go into closed session, hearing what we need to hear from staff, coming in, and if the staff wants to present or clarify some of this material, I'm open to that. But I'd rather table and continue this to Thursday or something, to really make sure that I understand the public has the ability to review these documents before we adopt the budget before June 30.
I'd like to make a counter-suggestion, okay? And I was going to be bringing this point up. Is there, I am reluctant to call another meeting this week to approve the budget, just because it really doesn't give enough time to digest what we need to digest in terms of looking at amendments and discussions and things that might need to be looked at. But I understand where you're coming from. We do not want to be approving things that we don't understand. And that's why I was attracted to the idea that we adopt the budget on the basis of the most broad criteria possible to meet our statutory requirements, while leaving a completely open the flexibility by amendment to approve things that we understand. One obvious example being the community groups, there's an umbrella amount with a stipulation that it's not to be decided how that's to be divided. I don't, for another example of I want to bring up, is the PEG funds. I don't want the passing of this budget tonight to imply an approval of a contract renewal without discussion on that item. So is there a way that we can pass broad categories, aggregate categories, without, you know, implied consent of a lot of structure that we're not prepared, detailed structure we're not prepared to approve tonight?
Can I make a couple of quick comments? In relation to, I totally understand your concerns, Councilmember Lara, totally. It is a little bit overwhelming, but we can boil this down to really, it's very simple what's here, it's just a lot of pages, because that's, this is basically, so all the stuff you have on the left there, in the white, is what you have seen already, okay?
I understand that.
And everything in the pink are things that we have discovered, and there's minimal things in there, so, but you do have a proposed budget in front of you that could be adopted as-is, and we come back on to next week or two weeks and modify it. The budget can be modified any Tuesday.
Are there any implied encumbrances by approval that cannot be modified in two weeks?
This is just the spending authority for the city. It's not entering into any contracts or anything like that, it's-
Mr. Summers looks like he wants to weigh in.
Yeah, if you, for example, adopted the proposed budget that was passed out last time, as-is, that would give staff the authority to spend everything in there, but it can't all be spent in two weeks. Then come two weeks from now, then you could change any of it at will. The statute requirement is to have a budget in place by July 1. You can always amend it at will. And you could also direct that staff, you could direct, as we've noted, the community organizations to be a line item for X amount for all of them, and don't spend any of that money yet, let's have the council consider that later. You could do the same for any other line items.
Right, there's a number of things like that, that I want to make sure there's no, that we're not implying consent to, while still meeting our statutory requirements.
And the base statute requirement is to adopt a budget.
You know.
I mean, I-
I guess I'm not sure what's achieved, is what I'm trying to say, by saying we're going to come back here in two days, in 48 hours.
Well, I feel like-
One thing we got, we have schedules, and we have a lot of, how much can we really add to an intelligent discussion?
I mean, I could, it could take me a day or less to really look at this and see if my questions relate to this. I'm not asking, because I know everything that's on the white. That, to me, is, I read through it, I've analyzed it, and when I flip pages, sometimes I do see a good amount of things under adjustment, number one, adjustment revenue estimate, they see adjustment, they see, so it's not, and I'm not an economic major, or I'm not, I can't just-
I understand.
-fly through this in a heartbeat and understand it. It takes me a little bit more time to really fully understand where all those numbers, what they all they mean. That's just my-
I understand, I'm with you.
... personal preference. And I'm not, in two days, I feel like, yeah, we could actually look at this and say, but if, again, if it's-
I got two days full. I tell you.
Well, let's take this one step further, that I think we have a responsibility, and I think that we should uphold that. The second thing that I've heard is that we have the ability to come back and amend any of this at any time. And the fact that there's only three of us and not five, I think that's a big issue and a big concern, that it's not just you coming back in two days, and then us having the ability to say, okay, we're going to agree with this, and then still amend it when a full council is present. I think we can do what we need to do, knowing that we're going to come back with a full council and really review each one of these, especially it would even give you additional time to review any of the areas that you really have a major concern with.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I have a major concern with any of these. I could not, and it could be done easily in two days. It could be that simple. But it's just the principle, for me, about voting on something that I haven't fully vetted. And then also, the fact that this hasn't been introduced to the public openly, voting on something, that, to me, bothers me just in principle, it doesn't bother me, I understand our current situation, but I don't like to do these kind of things with any issue.
And I totally agree with you on that. And we, the intent is for you to understand everything in this budget as much as you can or you want to understand, and it's not a problem. Like I said, what you have is the proposed budget there, this is an attachment to our, this is not, this is not surplanting what we have there in our proposed budget. This is some additional information that provides some additional clarifications and adjustments that have been discovered since the proposed budget was created. And so, you know, in no way gives us, I mean, for instance, in CIP, in Fund 31, our Capital Projects Fund, we authorize expenditures of, I think it's a couple million, a couple million dollars in there, but Greg can't go and pave a road unless he comes back to us with a contract. So it doesn't, it doesn't give us contracting authority or anything like that, it just allows us a spending plan, and so any contract would come back.
Well, but let's talk about something also, a little more specific. If we approve this budget tonight, embedded in this is a structure of pay raises.
So we, correct, we could hold off on that.
We're going to go into closed session to discuss some of those issues. But there's only three of us, and maybe, can we amend something having to do with the, what we would approve tonight in terms of the pay schedules in two weeks? Are we bound, if we pass something tonight, let's say, on the number of, you know, one of the issues, I don't know how much I can say, but I think you know where I'm going with this. Okay? So if we're adopting something with respect to the pay structure, that when all five of us get together in two weeks, we want to change, can we?
I would recommend that you adopt it excluding, Mr. Summers wants to hush me and speak, he's got more legal stuff in his knowledge than I do, for sure.
Going to make a comment here, sorry to cut you off there, try to protect the city, but yes, you would have the power to change anything in here, including a embedded salary level or other salary decision, with the caveat that you can't take it back for that two-week period.
Oh, for that two-week period?
Yeah, in other words, if-
Of course.
Right, so the paychecks that go out, those are set.
But beyond that two-week period, in other words, what are we binding ourselves to that the three of us, by passing the budget tonight, that the five of us, when we get together in two weeks, couldn't change? And the answer I'm hearing is, other than the pay over those two-week period, nothing.
Exactly. All you'd be binding yourselves to is what happens in those two weeks.
Okay, so let's take it one step further, and we don't pass this.
It's okay.
We don't pass this. What are the consequences?
If the city doesn't have a budget approved by July 1st, we can't operate.
They don't have a spending authority on July 1.
The city would lose the ability to-
But that means we don't write any checks.
The city would lose the ability to write any checks, including to PERS, to the sheriff, to your contract staff, to the payroll.
It would probably generate an audit finding.
It would very much generate an audit finding. It would also raise concerns with regard to your bond compliance, your certificates of participation, your securities law compliance. I highly, highly do not recommend not adopting a budget.
And I was suggesting to not adopt it for June 30. I mean, I actually was proposing, let's take just a day or so to look at it, and then adopt it before July 1. I, again, it's my personal belief, it's not that I have no trust in the city, it's just the fact that I like to look at my material before I actually give my blessing, regardless. I was, before I had received this, I was comfortable with the budget, but now that I see this, it's, to me, I just have a conflict.
Yeah. Councilmember Lara, what I'd ask you to consider is that, to do something otherwise than simply agree to this, with the understanding that we can make adjustments when all five of us are here at the next regularly-scheduled meeting, I think is a better path than, in effect, binding, first of all, I don't know about my schedule, I don't know about Council Haney's schedule, we've got two other council people, we don't know their schedule. I just don't see it practical, frankly, to try to meet again before the June 30 deadline, given the fact that we're, we have the ability to do this in a proper way in two weeks, in terms of making amendments if we feel like we need to.
And I would argue that adding and making sure that we do schedule a special meeting, at least, the three of us will go with a better understanding of what we adopted. When we all meet as a group, I understand we have the ability to amend the budget, but at least, there's, I guess, for us, there's a peace of mind knowing that we do understand what these adjustments mean.
Yeah, I just don't agree, but-
Well, the way I look at it, is if all three of us don't agree, it's gonna, you're going to control that anyway. So if you don't agree, say so. And then tell us when you'd like to meet, and what time, and so forth.
But it, like I said, I think we should still, yeah, I still-
You don't have to explain yourself, you've already done that. Just tell us what you want to do, so we can move on.
Well, I think it's the majority of this council, what this-
No, we, there's only three of us tonight, so in order to pass this budget and meet our statutory requirements, all of us need to agree.
Right. So if you're not in agreement, and Savaral, I'm not condemning you for your beliefs.
Well, how about we do, how about we do this? We go to closed session, I want to hear what staff has to say about these changes, and see if they could give us a somewhat-
Some clarity.
Some clarity of what this means, and then I'll see where I stand. Because I don't want to be, but at the same time, I understand that if you guys have a scheduling conflict, I don't want to be that one, that, but I just want to make sure that I express myself.
And in turn, we don't want to also pressure you if you're not comfortable doing something. So let's go do that.
Mr. Livingston.
I just wanted to see if I could ask Mr. Summers a point of clarification. So if we pass the proposed budget tonight, which includes dollars for anticipated COLA increases for the employees, so what have we approved? Have we approved the dollars? Or have we approved COLAs for everyone? Could we not pass this and not grant the COLAs as part of the budget document right now? Because that's one of the concerns that we have right there that could be brought back. And so then, we're not even, you know, losing two weeks of, you know, potential exposure there.
That would be an option, the council could approve the proposed budget without any cost of living increases, maintaining the current rates of pay and current salary levels that would keep your current payroll the same for the next two weeks. And then, at the July 12 meeting, consider amending it to include a COLA, which you could also make retroactive.
Correct.
Well, in other words, it could be amended to do a capture there.
Yeah.
All right, well, again, I-
And I promise we won't spend the whole salary in that.
No, I understand, I understand that. I just, I just feel it's important that all, that all five of us be at the next discussion. I just feel very strongly about that. But I understand your point of view. I guess we'll adjourn to closed session now.
One quick note, because of the carve-out-for-the-closed-session exception, it is to talk only about the personnel issues.
Yes.
We really can't get into the other issues in closed session, we would have to do that in an open session.
Completely understand.
We have the personnel issues to discuss.
And there's personnel issues in these packets, right?
There's some other-
Not really, it's, the only things that are correct, with regard to personnel, the only things in there are corrections to calculations and estimates that were made previously. So it's not, it really isn't any of the issues that we, you've discussed in closed session.
All right, so with that, I'm going to give notice that we are going to adjourn to closed session, and then convene for consideration of budget approval.
And amendment of the current year's budget.
We are reconvening the open session, the city council meeting for June 28. And we've come down to closed session without any announcement, and we are going to take up again Agenda Item Number Two, which is the considerations of the budget adoption. So would it be out of order for me to make a suggestion? Okay. I'm going to make a suggestion that we consider, and this is not in the form of a motion, but just a possible way to structure a motion, which would be to adopt the 20, well, let me back up a little bit, the resolutions that include revising the 2015-2016 budget?
We could hold off on that.
I was going to say. So a possibility is that we simply adopt the proposed 2016-2017 budget as modified below, and I think we could leave that out too, amending the salary resolution and updating the employee handbook, that could be left out as well?
Yes, it could.
So what we could do is simply adopt the proposed 2016-2017 budget with the- So what we could do is simply adopt the proposed 2016-2017 budget with the stipulation that until the next council meeting, there will be no change in expenditure authority for either capital projects, community outreach groups, or compensation schedules. That would be something we could consider.
I mean, I'm fine with that, just because it allows us as a council to come back and fully discuss the, the adopted resolutions, and we could make, in that, in that motion, we can make our suggestions.
Okay.
And not hold anything back, and we won't have to call a special meeting either.
Okay. Uh, is it, is it, yes, Mr. McClary?
We were just discussing, and we think we would recommend that you continue the public hearing to the July 12th meeting.
Yes.
As part of your action.
So that would be a combination of continuing the public hearing and adopting the proposed budget with the stipulations that I listed, would be a possible path forward?
Yeah, that'd be possible path forward. And that, the expectation would be that anyone who received the public hearing notice on the budget would know, would have come tonight, and would know to come next time on July 12th to then hear the proposed amended fiscal year 2016-17 budget.
And, um, is it out of order for, if we are in agreement, is out of order for me as chair to go ahead and?
No, it's, I think it's, you're, you have the authority to make a motion.
Chair may make a motion. It's, it's not a common practice.
Well, actually, I was going to make a motion, and I was just going to say whatever Bill just said.
So moved.
I'm so moved.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to throw it right back at Mr. Summer. Mr. Summer, would you like to restate my motion in legal language, please? Sure.
As I understand the motion, it's to adopt the resolution before you approving the proposed budget for fiscal year 2016-17, amended from the version of the staff report to delete the references to the revised final budget for fiscal year 2015-16, and to add a further requirement that the expenditure authority is limited to levels in the fiscal year 2015-16 budget pending further approval by the City Council.
And that covers the three categories that I, okay?
I understand it too. Yes.
So that's the motion. Do we need a second?
I'll second.
Any further comment on staff, from staff?
No, I think it's quite clear what those three are. No capital, no community outreach, or compensation schedule changes. So just, we, the direction's clear to me.
All right, so motion's made.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion.
Yep.
And I appreciate your input at which, which condition, what we ended up, you know, putting out for here for a motion, so.
No, and I appreciate your willingness to, to adopt just the, the basics and standard, just to make sure we get everything going and we have the ability to come back and really look at the budget.
Well, and also the public has the opportunity, like you were saying, to review it also.
Public has the opportunity to come back, and all five council people have the opportunity to-
Right, perfect.
I appreciate your, your suggestion.
So basically, meeting our statutory requirements, holding things steady and still until everybody has a chance to weigh in. Okay? That's how I'm going to characterize it.
That's how I understand it.
And, and as I, we need to vote.
We have to vote, but Mr., did you?
No, I was going to say-
The motion's on the table.
The motion's on the table, and the only thing I would say is that I understand that one of the concerns was is, is some of the changes and not understanding them, and, and I would just want to make sure that we know that I'm available to discuss those with you to help you to understand any of these changes and complete, you know, you know, so that you're totally, you know, informed on everything that is in here.
I appreciate that. And with that, if there is no further discussion on the motion, I'll entertain a roll call.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lara?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wyrick?
Yes.
One last question before we leave that. Just throw this out as an option for council. Because we know our regular meetings get pretty jammed up, do you want to do a budget workshop at 6 o'clock on the 12th prior to the regular meeting to go through the questions?
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
We will do that then.
I think we should. That would be the budget workshop at 6.
Correct.
And then it'd still be agendaized as a continued item during the regular meeting.
As a continued public hearing, right.
Right, and we should also probably prioritize that as the number one.
And that would be number one that night.
So that we spend the time necessary to-
Right. And bump everything else that has to be bumped. We spend the time we need.
Okay.
Yes, you're getting a very engaged council this fiscal year on budget review.
Well, we apologize that we didn't get further along.
I don't think there's anything to apologize for. I just think you've got a council full of committed interest. Okay, we, I believe, are ready to adjourn the meeting.
Is there an oral report?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't think, I, I, oral reports.
The only thing that I can think to, to mention, and this would actually probably be the city attorneys', would be the, the one wireless bill, the Gatto bill, 2788, I think was the number on it. It died at committee, I believe, so-
Not even, before it got to the committee hearing, yeah. Maybe 2788 was the bill. This is the one, you recall, that had a number of terrible provisions forcing approval of simply horrid wireless cell sites. Assemblymember Gatto heard the obvious writing on the wall from the league and from CSAC and others, and pulled the bill. So it's dead for now. He won't reintroduce it. However, as always with the legislature, they can, they can put things on the calendar through the end of the year, through the end of their session in September. We're monitoring it, but for now, it's dead. The scuttlebutt from the league is they don't expect it to reappear this year. Certainly, they'll try again next year. AT&T was the underlying sponsor. It's not that hard to find a legislature to buy.
And while we're discussing Sacramento, any new developments on the affordable housing?[1750.12]